Welcome to the City Council's August 23 regular City Council meeting. This is a hybrid meeting with City Council, city staff, and members of the public participating in City Council chambers in accordance with Public Health Guidelines for in-person meetings and participating remotely to promote social distancing in this federal, state, and local emergency. I would like to introduce City Council members and staff present. Vice Mayor Jen Woolison, City Council members Drew Combs, Ray Mueller, and Cecilia Taylor. Staff present include City Manager Justin Murphy, City Attorney Nir Adorati, and City Clerk Judy Heron. City Clerk Karen, would you please provide instructions to the City Council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Nash, and again echoing a welcome to our August 23 regular City Council meeting. For members of the public who wish to provide public comment, after the mayor calls for public comment on that item, we ask that you engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. And if you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, you can press star nine at that time. And that concludes my introductions.
Agenda review. Agenda review provides advance notice to members of the public and city staff of any modifications to the agenda order and any requests from City Council members under City Council member reports. Staff will be providing updates following public comment in on item E1. Does the City Council wish to pull or modify any agenda item? Public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the City Council on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the City Council once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address or political jurisdiction in which you live. The City Council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the City Council cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment other than to provide general information. I will call for public comment at the appropriate time for members of the public to address the City Council on any item under agenda sections, presentations and proclamations, study sessions, consent calendar, regular business, informational items. City Clerk Karen, please call for general public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide public comment for items not on tonight's agenda, please engage that hand feature at the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine now. This will be the final call for public comment for items not on tonight's agenda. Mayor Nash, seeing no hands, you may continue.
Thank you. I would like to introduce Police Chief Dave Norris to provide an update to the City Council and members of the public.
Thank you, Mayor Nash and Council. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to be here. Although there is not a lot of substantive update that I can provide just for those members of the public who may not have been around this weekend or where on Sunday afternoon, just after 1:00 PM, there was a shooting incident in the 500 block of Oak Grove in our city that did result in a serious but non-life-threatening injury to one individual. We do know at this time that this appears to be an isolated targeted event from which the suspects in this incident immediately fled. We know that there is no additional danger in that area to the community at this time. Our detectives are currently actively investigating, pursuing leads on this. We do hope to be able to provide an update in the near future, but this is, you know, kind of in that 48-hour period immediately after an incident like this where there's a lot of investigation that's being done behind the scenes that we wish we could tell you a lot more about, but that our detectives really need the time to do the work on that. And so while we don't have a substantive update for you on that at this time, just to, you know, let the public know that we are pursuing all of our possible investigative leads and working very hard in the background to provide additional information to the public and, you know, bring the person who is responsible for this to justice. One additional comment that I want to make on this is that I know that from feedback that we received from the public over the weekend, we did provide some initial information to let folks know that we were out there working in that scene and to stay out of the area during the immediate investigation that ensued following the incident. However, we, you know, with incidents like this, we will always take it back and look at it from beginning to kind of a point of safety for those investigations and what we could have done differently or how we may have learned some lessons from this. And we know that while we provided information to ensure that the public knew that there was something happening in the area, we could have been perhaps quicker with providing further information to tell folks what happened. And that's a lesson learned that we can take back and incorporate into our operations the next time around. I will also say that while this type of violent crime is very, very rare for Menlo Park, we do know that violent crime is on the rise in other parts of our area. Our police officers here who are working in patrol have done an incredible job in their proactive patrol work, taking dozens of illegally possessed guns off the streets in the past few months, and will continue to do that diligent work to help protect our community. And that information also helps us when we encounter a case like this to help us put pieces together that might help us solve a crime. So I'm very grateful for the hard work that our officers are doing every single day to keep this type of crime, this level of crime very low in Menlo Park.
Thank you very much, Chief Norris, for the update, and please convey our appreciation to the rest of the department as well for their hard work.
Thank you.
City Clerk Karen, can you please provide the update on item E1, Certificate of Recognition, Menlo Park Sister Cities Young Artists and Authors Showcase Winner?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Nash. So for item E1, staff is requesting that it be continued to September 20 City Council meeting.
Thank you. So we'll now go to the study sessions. Study sessions are an opportunity for city staff to introduce an item that will require policy direction from the City Council in the near future. City staff will provide a brief presentation. I will then call for public comment. After public comment, the City Council will discuss the matter interactively with staff. The City Council will not take an action on items addressed in study sessions. The City Council may provide direction to city staff for preparation of additional analysis or information necessary when the item returns to the City Council for action. The first study session item is F1, Review and Provide Direction on the Updated Community Amenities Proposal for the Willow Village Master Plan Project. To introduce the item is Acting Planning Manager Kyle Parata.
Excuse me, Mayor Nash, before Mr. Parata introduces the item, I have to announce my recusal from this item. Facebook Meta is the property owner here and also my employer. So there's obviously clear conflict, and so I'll be recusing myself from this matter.
All right, I think that's my cue. Thank you, Councilmember Combs. I seem to have screen sharing disabled.
Try now.
Okay. All right. Okay, so thank you with that small technical difficulty over. Good evening, Mayor Nash and members of the City Council. I'm Kyle Parata, Acting Planning Manager, here to introduce the item tonight before you. This is a study session item on the Willow Village Master Plan, the updated community maze proposal. So with that, I'll quickly go into a brief overview of the meeting purpose here. So this is a study session. It's an opportunity for the City Council to review the updated community amenities proposal. After my brief overview, the applicant does have a presentation. So staff would suggest that the council allow the applicant an opportunity to present next. And following that, it's an opportunity for public comment, an opportunity for the council to ask clarifying questions and provide feedback on the applicant's update proposal. One point of order before I get started, we did receive three additional items of correspondence prior to the, or post, after posting of the staff report and prior to the start of the meeting this evening. Moving on, the council this evening should consider the following when providing any feedback to staff. The first being whether the proposed amenities satisfy the criteria and need for community amenities. The second, whether the applicant and the city have adequately valued proposed community amenities and whether the proposed maze are consistent with the current City Council adopted community maze list. There's more detail on these criteria in the staff report. So just briefly to orient the community, the project, the main project site is a 59-acre existing industrial site. It's located at Willow Road at the intersection of Hamilton Avenue, generally bounded by the SFPUC, San Francisco Public Utilities Commission, excuse me, right away to the south, the life sciences area of Adams Drive, Adams Drive and O'Brien Drive to the east, Dunbarton Rail Quarter to the north, and the Bellhaven Residential Neighborhood across Willow Road to the west. And for the orientation here, I'll use Willow Road in a north-south orientation. The project site does also include the Hamilton Avenue Parcels just to the west on the north and south sides of Hamilton Avenue. So just briefly, a quick reminder of the site plan here. I won't go into all the details, but just some basic components. The project does include 1,730 dwelling units, 1.6 million square feet of offices, which include me and collaboration and accessory space. It also includes 193-room hotel and up to 200,000 square feet of retail. There's also publicly accessible open space located throughout the site. In the item labeled 3 at the bottom left corner of the site plan is a three-and-a-half-acre publicly accessible park. And so just a quick update on the community maze valuation. So the minimum required valuation, as determined by the city's appraisal review of the project, is $133.3 million. The estimated value of the update proposal before the council this evening is 187.7 million. That's a preliminary estimate. A little bit of background, the City Council has received a study session previously at its May 24 meeting this year that provide an opportunity for the council to review the initial proposal and receive public comment and individual council members to provide individual feedback for the applicant and staff's consideration. Following the May 24 City Council meeting, the City Council Subcommittee for the Project has been working directly with the applicant to update the proposal in response to that study session. The update proposal this evening was submitted from the applicant in response to those discussions. And following this meeting, the City Council Subcommittee will continue to work with staff on the development of the development agreement and the overall community managed for the proposed project. So just briefly, the revised community many proposal. Tables 2 and 3 of the staff report complaint contain complete details on the proposed community amenities. I'll just focus here on the modifications since the May 24 study session. So just briefly going down the list here, since that study session, the applicant's update proposal now includes added a bayfront area shuttle for a period of up to 17 years, added funding for the Willow Road feasibility study, and that is a study regarding the relinquishment of Willow Road from Caltrans and ownership by the city. They also have added funding for affordable housing in addition to the BMR below-market rate requirements for the proposed project, and also added funding for air quality and noise monitoring in Bellhaven. Additional changes to the proposal, the applicant has reduced the value of the elevated park by 50% and removed the community many, community mobile market funding as well as the dog park improvements and the Willow Road tunnel bikes and bike and ped paths from the proposed community maze list or community maze proposal, excuse me. So just briefly, the community maze valuation. So the required minimum value is 133.3 million, as I mentioned previously. The previous proposal reviewed by the City Council in May was valued at 267.1 million, and the update proposal this evening is valued at 187.7 million. That's partially due to the removal of some items as well as reduction in credit for the elevated park, but also does include the additional funding and shuttle. The City Council Subcommittee has submitted a letter on the updated amenities. That's in attachment K of the staff report. In general, just a quick summary, the Subcommittee's letter does state that the update proposal includes sufficient qualifying community amenities and outlines specific topics for clarifications and refinements throughout the process. So following this evening's study session, the next steps, city staff will continue to conduct the project review. That includes upcoming milestones regarding the release of the final EIR as well as review and preparation of the land use entitlements for the proposed project. Pending completion of those two items, the potential hearing schedule, the planning commission could recommend on the proposed project, they're recommending body in this capacity in mid to late October with the City Council potentially taking initial actions in early to mid-November on the proposed project. Those future hearings are tentative and depend upon completion of the environmental and entitlement review. Does include the final EIR, as I mentioned, the land use entitlements include the development agreement, the conditional development permit, below-market rate housing agreement, as well as the general plans, circulation element, and zoning map amendments. And just briefly, again, to remind the City Council, the meeting purpose this evening is to review and provide feedback and consider those three items I mentioned previously. I won't read them again here, but those are also in the staff report as well as to provide any additional feedback on the updated community maze proposal for staff and the applicant to consider going forward. And that concludes my presentation. Have to answer any clarifying questions. Otherwise, the applicant is here and does have their own presentation for the council's evening. Thank you.
Good evening. Can I share my screen here? My name is Mike Gilmedy. I'm the President of Signature Development Group, and we're excited to be here tonight to discuss updates. I'm, staff Kyle stole my thunder, gave away all my secrets, but I'm, we're really proud and excited to say that we're in general concurrence with, with staff and with the notes here from the, from the Subcommittee. Just as a little bit of recap for those who don't live the project like I do and for those members of the public who are joining either for the first time or for the first time in a while. The community many's overview, there are about $133 million worth of required community amenities. We're proposing a little under 200 million. In fairness, the valuations that we're giving are slightly different from the ones that staff has because staff's in the city's outside consultant is valuing certain items differently. But for all intents and purposes, we're over the required amounts and we can, you know, haggle over amounts, but, but in general agreement, hopefully, with regard to the broad brushstrokes of what the amenities are and how they're laid out. We've been working on this for a little over four years. I've worked really extensively with the community, both pre-COVID, when we could have meetings like this and chat with our neighbors and friends in person. But then, once we had to work differently in the middle of the pandemic and had a lot of Zoom coffee clutches and meetings and worked to do outreach with folks as best we could. In that time, we met with thousands of stakeholders. We had large community meetings, we did live polling, online surveys, put out flyers in multiple languages and sought input and feedback wherever we could, including social media, and worked with folks to earn their support. What we heard in the process, again, excuse me for repeating myself for those of you who have been attending these meetings, was this notion of wanting to get a grocery store as soon as possible, get affordable housing, get better jobs, housing balance from the initial proposals, work on a kind of a town square, public gathering place, and other open space parks and the like. As it relates to the retail preferences, I think the number one thing we heard loud and clear was this area has been without a grocery store for too long. Bellhaven in particular, and in the bayfront, and we're in need of amenities like a grocery store and other types of things to make it feel like a neighborhood, restaurants and cafes, bakeries, coffee shops, family entertainment of various types, pharmacy, those types of uses or pharmacy services. As it relates to open space, the, basically what we had heard was that the folks in the neighborhood were really interested in more contemplative or bucolic-type spaces versus, you know, active sports fields and the like. You know, places for, for families to go and hang out or for parents and kids to throw a ball around or kick a ball around, but, but more kind of mellow passive-type places. And, you know, these are just some quotes we took from folks about collaborating and building community. And these are some of the things that folks had tasked us with, that we're working on. We changed plans two or three times now, or actually three times, in response to community input. So really proud of, of the input we got and hopefully the direction we've taken it. I've alluded to, and Kyle has alluded to some of the changes we've made. We've moved for the grocery and retail and accelerated that into phase one. We've approved connectivity to the Bellhaven neighborhood. We've improved the jobs housing balance by reducing the amount of office from initial plans and increasing the amount of housing. We've provided affordable housing, and I'll share with you in a minute. We've increased the amount of affordable housing through some, through some fees, reduced office space, reduced traffic impacts, and created all these new parks and open spaces and trails. Kind of a summary of some of the amenities, because we're here more focused on the amenities and the actual project itself. The grocery store, bringing it into phase one and accelerating it, providing a subsidy for that store because we're, we're accelerating it so that it'll be open before everything else is there, and so we're subsidizing that store. Pharmacy services, banks and credit union benefits, restaurants and cafes, high-quality affordable housing, including senior housing, community attainment offerings, that could be kind of theater or movies or bowling or those types of things, and job training and community hub for the, for the local community here in Bellhaven and Bayview. Something that we're very excited about is this elevated park, which we've shared in prior meetings, that is a little over two acres, that can have a whole variety of uses, but, but one of the primary purposes of it is to connect Bellhaven. This is the Bellhaven side of the, the west side of Willow. This is, this is Willow here, and so it takes up and over and has strategic landing points on the other side. But it basically goes all the way over with views of the, the refuge and into the Baylands. Sorry, there's a delay here. An elevated park is a big enough area where we can have lots of active and passive uses with views of the campus of Bellhaven and again, the Baylands. This is the, the town square below, which we can line with retail and have active uses as well. Maybe places for, you know, food trucks and kiosks as well. So lots of fun, active programming in there. And then this is that more bucolic passive park that I spoke about. We originally had this program different ways, but listened to the community as they explained to us the types of uses and what this wanted to become. This is an artist iteration, it's not the exact programming of the park. Since we presented all these things, we've been meeting both with staff and the Subcommittee and in conjunction with those meetings, which I think have been very productive, we've come up with, at their suggestions, some new amenities. One is a shuttle. The exact route in times to be determined in the ensuing part of the entitlement here, as Kyle had mentioned. But needless to say, would take into account Bellhaven, Baylands, Willow Village, et cetera, in some kind of broad loop so that we can facilitate movement of peoples in the area to and from Willow Village and to and from places of work and connectivity to other bus and shuttle routes. Another thing that was, we heard loud and clear from prior meetings and at the City Council from public testimony and again, from staff and Subcommittee members, was the need for affordable housing. So we have, in addition to the affordable housing that will be delivering on-site, that satisfies our requirements there, we will also be giving an additional $5 million towards affordable housing programs in the city of Menlo Park as determined by staff and council. And other things that were brought up were the notion of feasibility studies for Willow Road as to the future of Willow Road and potential ownership by municipalities versus Caltrans. So we will be helping to facilitate a study by donating funds for the, to, for the city to use for studies and also purchasing high-quality air and noise monitors for Bellhaven, which we thought was a good suggestion from Subcommittee members. So that rounds out to roughly $200 million. Again, as staff defined it, it was a slightly lower amount, I think about 185 million if I'm not mistaken. And that came, you know, through, stop sharing here. That came through discussions, both through staff and Subcommittee members. So again, we're very happy with the progress we've made working with everyone. We have more work to do, but we really wanted to hear feedback to make sure that we were in the right place here as it relates to our community amenities. So with that, I'd like to hand it back over to staff and, and hear feedback from council and public.
Thank you very much. I'm going to give a brief presentation from the Subcommittee, and then we will go to public comment. So I'd like to put, to thank Acting Planning Manager Kyle Parata and Mr. Gilmedy for their remarks on the status of the Signature Meta Willow Village process. It's for more than a year, Councilmember Taylor and I have been working closely with representatives of Signature and Meta to reach an understanding about the impacts of this development on the surrounding community and the specific community amenities required under the general plan in exchange for the bonus level development they seek. Community amenities are things that directly benefit the existing bayfront community as opposed to future residents, areas outside of bayfront or Meta and its employees. Happily, we are very close to an agreement about what those qualifying community amenities will be. We believe there are only a small handful of relatively modest adjustments to the current proposal needed. Signature and Meta have been good partners in this effort, and we look forward to an early conclusion to our negotiations. We also want to thank City Manager Murphy, City Attorney Doherty, and Assistant City Attorney Shimko, and Acting Planning Manager Parata for their help getting us here. At this point, I'd like to ask Councilmember Taylor if she has any additional comments to elaborate on our work on this project.
Thank you, Mayor Nash, and I really appreciate the statement that you put together. I support everything that you've said, and I appreciate all the work that everyone involved has put into this process, especially a public comment on our community members that had direct input on what they wanted to see as a community amenity, and I appreciate this time. Thank you, Mayor Nash.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. City Clerk Karen, do we have any public comments on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on item F1, Review and Provide Direction on the Updated Community Amenities Proposal for the Willow Village Master Plan Project, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine now. And our first speaker will be Matt Reagan.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. My name is Matt Reagan. I'm Senior Vice President of Policy at the Bay Area Council. We are a regional business-sponsored public policy and advocacy organization, and I manage our housing and land use portfolio of work. Our project endorsement committee looked at this project some months ago and unanimously supported it. It's a phenomenal project, a phenomenal proposal, one which the city of Menlo Park should be very proud of, the, the input and the work that you've done on this as well as the project sponsors. The Willow Village project will make that part of your community, that part of your city, an integral part of your city for the first time. It will turn that neighborhood into something that you can all be very proud of. And I think the project sponsors, in collaboration with the city, have done a phenomenal job at creating an incredibly generous package of amenities. We often overlook perhaps the most important amenity, and that's over 1,700 new homes, 1,700 families who will be, who will get the call. Seventeen hundred families who will be, who will get to call Menlo Park home in the future. I think that's a phenomenal amenity that we should never uh, overlook uh, in the way that we do. Three hundred and twelve of those will be affordable, plus an additional five million dollars uh, to the city's affordable housing uh, funds. So we are urging you to support this project as swiftly as possible, move it along as quickly as possible. We have a dire shortage of housing in the Bay Area. And um, it's it's incumbent upon all of us to to make sure that uh, we support good projects. And uh, you and the city will know that your new Rena numbers are close to three thousand units. And this single project will will constitute close to sixty percent of your full uh, Rena obligation for the next cycle. So um, I hope you approve it. I hope you move it as quickly as possible. It's a phenomenal project and uh, we wish you the best of luck with it and and uh, and uh, hope to see it uh, at the ribbon cutting in the not too distant future. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is calling in. Um, I'll need you to state your name for the record. The last four digits of the phone number is six, two, zero, three, and following that speaker is Ali Saperman.
Hello, um, my name is Michael Choa. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, Michael.
Oh, okay, great. Excuse me. Uh, good evening, council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Michael Choa, and I'm a field representative for carpenters local two seventeen here in San Mateo County. I'm here tonight to voice my support of the Willow Village project. I started my career here in San Mateo County at the SFO Airport. I was able to enter into an apprenticeship, be provided with on the job training, healthcare, and a retirement. I was given a chance to start a career that is provided not only for me, but also for my family. Willow Village de- delivers badly needed amenities and services to the Bell Haven District. Such as a full service grocery store, pharmacy, services, cafe, cafes and restaurants. Publicly accessible park space and community gathering spaces such as a town square. Menlo Park and its residents deserve this along with affordable housing. The five million for affordable housing will be a game changer for the Bell Haven residents. I urge you to move, to move the Willow Village project forward, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. So our next speaker is Ali Saperman, followed by Vince Roca.
Good evening. My name is Ally Saperman, and I'm calling here on behalf of the Housing Action Coalition to speak in strong support of the Willow Village uh, Affordable Housing Project, uh, which will uh, which the Housing Action Coalition enthusiastically endorsed. I'll now expand on three key elements and why the Willow Village deserves your support. First, it transforms space into affordable homes. This project replaces a nineteen seventies outdated R and D office space with for fifty-nine acres with mixed use project, which brings seventeen, one thousand seven hundred and thirty new homes. Approximately eight percent will be subsidized affordable, which is more than three hundred affordable homes, and will increase the city's affordable housing stock by sixty percent. Of these, a hundred and twenty of the homes will be reserved for seniors, providing much needed senior housing at very low income and extremely low income levels. Willow Village's Affordable Housing Plan brings unprecedented housing resources where they are truly needed most. Second, it creates a community of resources for existing residents. Willow Village is a community facing mixed use site that connects Bell Haven neighborhood to badly needed amenities and services such as a grocery store, pharmacy services, up to two hundred thousand square feet of retail, a significant open space, and a town square as well as a Bell Haven's uh, shuttle. Third, it's built using environmentally friendly practices. This project is built to lead old certification, meaning the buildings will be equipped with a hundred percent electric power, use recycled water and sustainable materials. Um, it'll also have funding for air quality monitoring. And a reduction in office space will result in an improved circulation plan, meaning thirty percent reduction in traffic impacts, which is always a deep concern for current residents. Finally, Willow Village is built using the union labor, which provides living wages for working families, which is something we all strive for. We urge you to move this project forward without any delay. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment. So our next speaker is Vince Roca, followed by Ken Chan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Vince Groch. I'm with the Silicon Valley Leadership Group as the vice president of housing and community development. And I just want to say this process with Willow Village has been really a community driven process. And these are really unprecedented and rare amenities we see when we look at projects throughout the region. And we're fully supportive of the city now moving forward to the finish line, ensuring that the affordable housing, the grocery store, the other amenities are all really put into place in a timely manner so that we can start development sooner and deliver these great amenities for the residents of Menlo Park. So just want to say that we support this project, but also that you're really fortunate to have worked with a project sponsor that has worked closely with the community for years to ensure that the amenities they are providing are the ones that the residents have asked for. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So our next speaker is Ken Chan, followed by Brian Shields.
Uh, hello, members of the Menlo Park City Council. My name is Ken Chan, and I'm the senior organizer with the Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County. We work with our communities and their leaders to produce and preserve quality affordable homes. Uh, first and foremost, I'd like to thank both staff, uh, to thank staff for um, for all their hard work in putting together the presentation and report regarding the updated uh, community amenities proposal. On behalf of HLC and as in our previous comments regarding this proposal, I'd like to reiterate our support for Willow Village, uh, which seeks to create one thousand seven hundred thirty homes, of which three hundred and twelve will be affordable with a hundred and nineteen set aside for seniors. These homes, combined with the newly proposed five million dollars in additional funding for affordable housing for your community members in Menlo Park, have the potential to provide your city with a much needed relief against the jobs, housing imbalance that all of your residents are collectively experiencing in this moment. We urge you to take all the necessary steps to keep the forward momentum going for this proposal and to make it a reality for your community members. Thanks so much.
Thank you for your comment. So our next speaker is Brian Shields, followed by Jordan Grimes.
Hello, good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Brian Shields, and I'm a field representative for carpenters local two seventeen. Uh, covering San Mateo County. I I want to speak in support of this project. They've uh, they've taken the time to really listen to the community. They've done their due diligence. They've had their community meetings. They've adjusted their project to to match what the community has wanted. Uh, and this project is going to be built union, so that puts union families to work. Families that live inside Menlo Park, they'll be able to commute down the street instead of hours and hours away, uh, clogging up our freeways and and uh, not being able to be there for their kids, not being able to be there uh, to support their kids, pick them up from school, go to soccer practice and the like. Uh, I I want to just voice my support for this project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So our next speaker is Jordan Grimes, followed by Jeffrey Moore.
Yes, good evening, council honorable mayor. My name is Jordan Grimes. I'm a resilience manager with Green Belt Alliance. For those not familiar with us, we're an environmental nonprofit organization dedicated to helping create climate resilient and sustainable communities throughout the Bay Area. We at Green Belt are proud to endorse and strongly support Willow Village tonight. From a housing supply and affordability standpoint, these seven hu-teen hundred new homes provided by Willow Village are so badly needed in Menlo Park. We are particularly excited to see the builders go above and beyond to provide deeper levels of affordability, including uh, extremely low and very low income housing, which as we know are extremely hard to come by. Um, Willow Village prioritizes sustainability through efficiently reusing existing land and infrastructure to higher use. Uh, and the walkability and bikeability of the project, as well as the new parks and green space, uh, provide significant benefits to the community. The addition of new amenities in Bell Haven, including a grocery store, uh, as well as all the above mentioned benefits, will really help reduce local BMT and greenhouse gas emissions. Uh, it should be noted that UC Berkeley's cool climate calculator shows that increasing the city's supply of dense infill housing is the single most effective strategy the city can employ to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Ultimately, this is a strong badly needed project, and we at Green Belt Alliance urge your support tonight. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker is Jeffrey Moore, followed by Colin Bookman. Jeffrey, are you able to unmute your end?
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. All right. Good evening, council members. Thank you for allowing me the chance to speak at tonight's meeting. My name is Jeffrey Moore, and I'm a member of carpenters local two seventeen. By being an eighth period apprentice, I had the opportunity to learn uh, to learn the job and be a part of something bigger than myself. The North Pole carpenters provide me with a living ways that will increase. And as I make my way through my apprenticeship, along my way towards being a journeyman carpenter, they provide medical education benefits and take care of my whole family. Being a resident of Menlo Park, I have had the chance to work on Willow Village project, allowing me to spend more time with my family. The community amenities like the five million for additional affordable housing will provide the financial support for continued housing security for Menlo Park residents, especially for Bell Haven residents. In addition, knowing there will be funding for air quality and noise monitoring lets me know that the developer is looking out for not only me, but as well as those who live in Menlo Park. This project will also give the residents of the city the opportunity to start a career as a North Pole carpenter and feel the impact it will have on their life. Thank you for giving me the chance to speak. You guys have a good evening.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Colin Bookman, followed by Jenny Michelle. And this will be the final call for public comment on our first study session, F one.
My name is Menlo Park City Council. I'm Colin Bookman. I reside in East Palo Alto in the Chavado neighborhood. Right now, the Willow Village site is outdated, inward facing, industrial office and warehouse site, surface parking. Meta and the Willow Village plan, listen to the community needs, building a very needed grocery store, parks and dog park. I appreciate if this project could be fast tracked and we can get uh, to start realizing these benefits that are so greatly needed. I think it's amazing that, you know, an additional five million dollars of funding going above and beyond the affordable housing needs was put in the plan as well as the parks. Uh, it will be a great addition to the neighborhood for all involved. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Jenny Michelle, followed by Adina Levin.
Hi, uh, thank you so much for um, allowing me to speak, uh, mayor, vice mayor at council members and staff. My name is Jenny Michelle, and I'm from the Coleman Place Block. I um, although I'm calling as a mother, a long time resident. Um, uh, I'm also in a recovering homeless resident. I'm also calling because I'm a property manager and um, I am so excited about this project. I am also urging council to expedite this project. The vibrancy that this brings, I I just, my, I'm salivating. I I I just, uh, it's overwhelming. There is absolutely no doubt that the applicant is exceeding the statute requirements. And um, so yes, we should just keep moving forward with this. The scope is very comprehensive, um, and it will transform our region. Um, and we will become a real leader, I think. Um, and I optically, I think we need that right now. Um, and to be fair, I do have a concern that the uh, in watching the the region deal with the Rena numbers. Um, HCD will be looking for us to add diverse housing stocks. So I am just concerned that we are really beefing up in district one. Um, and especially because we have that ballot measure coming up. Um, that other residents might feel that there isn't a need to have um, all ranges of access to housing across all districts. Um, and I just really can't emphasize that enough because in watching other municipalities, um, they're trying to keep the dense housing on the outskirts of this city rather than bringing us into the fold. Um, so anyway, thank you so much again for um, all your work and please approve uh, expeditiously. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Adina Levin, followed by Katie Baruzzi.
Uh, good evening, council members. Adina Levin, Menlo Park resident. And I want to uh, generally and overall support the community amenities proposal that is being brought forward uh, to city council uh, today. And um, wanted to particularly call out and appreciate the uh, additional funding for affordable housing and the funding for the um, air and uh, uh, noise quality. So uh, uh, having been uh, participating in the uh, community group that is uh, looking at the um, environmental justice uh, element, including uh, the surveys from communities really um, showed uh, impacts in the community as well as um, the uh, issues. Um, and so these are things that even before that comes forward for broader policy solutions. Um, these are things that will be helpful with um, the uh, you know, reports that have been and are will again, be coming uh, you know, before the city council. Um, and uh, what I want to put most of my attention on in this comment is um, uh, that I, is something that I also wrote in in an email to city council this afternoon that has to do with the funding that is being proposed for an electric shuttle um, to help people um, get around in the area. Um, and to fund it by putting the money into a transportation management association that would support the shuttle. Um, so I think that this is a very good idea, and as a complement to that, I think that um, the area and this, the city um, would benefit from um, uh, something that is just starting to move forward, but is likely to be available by the time that the buildings open up. Um, this month, the region has started to pilot, it's called a Bay Path. This is an all agency public trans- transit pass. Um, the pilot is starting with fifty thousand people at public colleges and universities and affordable housing development. Um, it's expected to expand next year to a select number of employers and transportation management associations. And then after the pilot period, um, the uh, region is planning to develop a um, a pass for uh, many different types of organizations and possibly including neighborhoods that provide people with access to all public transit. So I don't know whether this is the correct funding source or whether it would be EIR mitigation or transport impact fees or um, what funding source, but that would be extremely complimentary um, to prov- to allow for the use of transportation funding um, to be able to help people access um, the public transportation system. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And our final speaker will be Katie Baruzzi.
Uh, hi, city council. Katie Baruzzi. I serve on the Complete Streets Commission, but I'm speaking for myself. Um, I'm glad to see that the community amenities proposal continues to evolve uh, in reaction to so much great community outreach and input and the um, collective work of the subcommittee and the various partners. So kudos. Um, I wanted to speak to one very specific thing, um, because when we think about amenities, um, we sometimes don't name the kinds of um, anticipated consequences of development, and I want to make sure that um, there are going to be a lot of new employees, a lot of new residents here. Some of the um, circulation plans that we saw in the Complete Streets Commission um, looked as though they might draw more traffic. And I like the idea of the shuttle, and I would like to see, I hope as the project evolves, um, considering all of the different residents that we're going to be adding into the base side, um, that we continue to think about what are the different routes um, to the grocery store, um, to the dog park. Uh, and and how about we design ways for people to get places? And, and how about we design ways for people to get places comfortably and conveniently and safely that don't, that don't require them getting into a car? Because I know the traffic on Willow Road is already really bad. And I just think we don't want to make it worse if we don't have to. So I just want to encourage that part of the plan to evolve as well with maybe less attention to creating wide roads that have the capacity for peak traffic and more focus on bike lanes and bike routes all the way across the M2 and Bayfront areas and definitely from Bell Haven and sidewalks and crosswalks and all the things we know. I just, I just want to keep elevating that as well so that people feel comfortable taking advantage of the amenities and so the communities can feel well-integrated. So thank you, that's all.
Thank you for your comment. And Mayor Nash, with no further hands.
You may continue.
Thank you, and thank you to all the public commenters. Let's now open for a city council discussion. Councilmember Mueller.
I appreciate all the work that's been done on this. But I did want to ask, what were the tweaks that you were referencing, Mayor Nash? Because I'd love to like just know tonight, what are the tweaks that, that is, RB, you are being, that's being contemplated to be added? So, because one of the things I'd like to just point out is, with the timeline that we have now, it'd probably be good for the council to know what you, what you guys are thinking than to wait till the next time this comes to us because we're getting close to anticipated end.
Thank you. All of the tweaks are in this subcommittee report and they revolved around a difference and staff picked up the comments and put them into the staff report as well. So they really are around the shuttle. Where exactly the shuttle will, what the route will be, not exactly what the route will be, that it needs to cover the entire Bayside community from Haven Avenue to the Bell Haven, not just Bell Haven, and also that we'd like it to be, it's important for it to be electric. And councilmember Taylor, do you, is there anything more to add? It's essentially that. And then we made a comment that we are, we very much hope that the mobile market, while it's not going to be part of this, will be continued.
I don't want to interrupt councilmember Taylor, but that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that based on your comments, there's a little ambiguous in council, whether there was something more. So I just wanted to make sure that we had the full universe.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Really appreciate that. Councilmember Taylor.
Mayor Nash, I didn't have anything else to add.
Thank you. Councilmember, Vice Mayor Wallison.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. And I actually had the same question that councilmember Mueller had. Just wanted to make sure there wasn't anything else hanging out there. Overall, I think that, first I want to thank the subcommittee, Mayor Nash and councilmember Taylor for working so diligently with our city attorney's office and the city manager and the applicant on working through these details. And for those community members who are tuning in and seeing, wait, they were offering, you know, over 200 million and now they're offering less than 200 million. How is that a win for the city? I think this goes back to who and who are the amenities for? And are they for the project itself or for the existing residents? And so while it may look like we're getting less, we're getting more of what we need and what we are asking for. And I think it's all of our hope and wish that the applicant, as they continue working forward, will consider, you know, more and revisiting some of the things that they had kind of dangled in front of us that of course looked wonderful. But again, looking at the definition of what the community amenities should be in District One, didn't quite meet that definition. So I think the current offering is, hits the mark. I'm happy to see that the subcommittee felt that as well. It seems like the details that the subcommittee have raised seem very minor and I'm, I'm hopeful that they'll be ironed out. My only one question, and this might be for city staff, is when we set up the TMA for the shuttle, I, I want to make sure that we have flexibility in the receivership and future use of it in case, you know, because it's for 17 years. So if it's saying specifically for that shuttle, if new opportunities avail themselves of, I don't know what life will look like in 17 years, that there's something in there that, that indicates that it's definitely for District One, but that there might be new revenue sources or grants or something, or potentially, you know, if there's a citywide shuttle system that we want to integrate and use those funds for that part. I just want to make sure we're not locked into some wording that will preclude a little bit of flexibility, again, acknowledging and ensuring that the money is, is for District One residents. So I guess that might be a question for city, or I guess, so this is a study session. So I would just ask that you consider that. I, I don't want it to have any negative implications or a ripple effect on this package. So I just wanted to throw that out there. But overall, I, I'm excited about this. I think there's going to be a lot of great things. As the resident Jenny Michelle was saying, you know, this is, could add a lot of wonderful vibrancy to our town with these amenities. So I just wanted to, to say I'm in support of, of going with this package. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Taylor.
Mayor Nash, I didn't have anything to add.
Thank you. Just in response to Vice Mayor Wallison's comment, the biggest item that came off the amenity list, actually, what it was is reducing the value in the community amenities package of the elevated park. It does not change the elevated park, but that was $66 million because of, as you stated, the, the shared benefit of the park. The tunnel did come off, the, thank you, the tunnel did come off of the amenity list. It is something that the developers definitely welcome to pursue, but it's something because of the location, it was not deemed to be a community amenity for the neighborhood. And just a comment about the shuttle and the TMA. The shuttle is specifically designed to provide access from all parts of the Bayfront to the grocery store and retail. And so if something does change over 17 years, that would, I will leave that to the legal staff. But it's specifically designed to provide access and be able to have people get out of the cars. There's some additional benefits as we outlined in the report, but it is primarily for access to and from the grocery store and the Willow Village amenity. Councilmember Mueller.
I want to make sure that what we're talking about is, and I guess it's a question for city man, city attorney and city manager, but the way that the contracts are fashioned is that it's for the delivery of the project, of, of the amenity, not the dollar value associated with the amenity. Because what my concern is right now is that with inflation at 9% month over month, we're seeing, seeing the value of the amenities decrease with time. So I just want to make sure that we have, that we're just, we're locking in a performance of the delivery. And so if that would be the case, then actually what we're getting right now is more than the 200 million with inflation taking place. But I don't know how that's calculated over time candidly. So I think it's probably a question for staff, how that's taken into account.
Through the mayor, I can start.
Mr. Prada, please.
Sure. So the, the value identified to councilmember Mueller's point is the preliminary value. That's something we're certainly looking into. The, the performance standard of the proposal is a shuttle for 17 years though. And that would be something that we would take into account as memorializing the community maze in the development agreement and if the construction development permit, any of the governing docs for the project.
City Attorney Doherty.
And to the extent, councilmember Mueller, that you were speaking more broadly about the amenities, yes, you're right, we are, we are not proposing or requiring any sort of true up. The conditional development permit is going to require the performance of the amenities and the construction of the amenities as you, as you have said.
Thank you. So I just wanted then, that being the case, just commend my colleagues, the professional staff and the applicant for continuing to work through this and bringing us so close to the end of this discussion, having us so in line with community expectations. So it's, it's a, it's a very good feeling as we get close to this finish line to know the amount of work that's been put into it. It's credit to all involved. Thank you.
Thank you. What would staff, do you need more direction or is this sufficient?
Yeah, thank you for giving me the opportunity. I think the conversation tonight was sufficient. I think we have some additional feedback and notes and appreciate the, the input this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Prada. Excellent job with this. And we will begin the next item in just a moment when councilmember Combs joins us.
Mayor Nash, the next item is, so while he's joining us, I'm going to recuse myself from the next item. And the reason why I'm accusing myself again, as I've stated in the past, is my son actually worked as a lifeguard within the last year for one of, for our current operator of the pool and potentially a future bid on this contract. So, thank you.
Thank you, and welcome, Mr. Combs, councilmember Combs. The final study item, study session item tonight is F2 Aquatics Program Analysis and Preliminary Considerations for an Aquatics Operator Request for Proposals. To introduce the item is Library and Community Services Director Sean Reinhardt.
Thank you, Mayor Sean Reinhardt, Library and Community Services Director. I believe you should be viewing the slide here that says Aquatics Analysis and Preliminary Considerations for Aquatics RFP.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. And so with that, I'll just walk through the slides, kind of an overview of the contents of the staff report, highlighting a few key considerations for the city council. First, just a couple of quick announcements related to the aquatics program. Last month, the city council authorized the city manager to execute a renewal of the current operators agreement. That's Team Sheeper, Inc., to operate the Burgess Pool through August 31st of next year. And these two report that that agreement has been finalized and signed. So the products program will continue through August 31st of next year, pending the outcome of this process. And then another quick update is I'm pleased to report that the city has hired a very experienced library and community services supervisor to oversee the recreation and sports divisions of the library and community services department, as well as acting as liaison for the aquatics contractor. Her name is Trisha Mullen. And she comes to us from the Stanford Redwood City Recreation and Wellness Center, where she was the general manager. It's a really substantial recreation facility, including indoor pools. So we're glad to have her on board. She joined us last week and she will be joining us when this item comes back to council on September 20th. So with that, let's just quickly mention that we're going to cover four key areas in the study session today. We're going to look at excerpts from the recently completed resident survey related to recreation and community programs. We'll be looking at the products related excerpts. We'll briefly touch on the analysis that was conducted of Millau Park's Aquatics Program, as well as the products programs in other area jurisdictions. Briefly touch on the preliminary estimate for what it would entail to, for the city to directly operate the aquatics program. And then finally, we'll look at the preliminary considerations for a request for proposals for an aquatics operator and see some closer feedback. So with that, we'll just jump into the survey. These are aquatics related excerpts. This survey was developed with input from the Millau Park Community Campus Subcommittee, which is Mayor Nash and councilmember Taylor. Thank you for your help there, along with the working group of residents that works with the subcommittee, as well the Parks and Recreation Commission, Library Commission and City Council all reviewed the draft survey before it was released on June 13th. It closed August 10th. I've had 900, over 900 respondents, so really great rate of response. Attachment A to the report contains the aquatics related excerpts from the survey results, the complete results of all the areas of the survey. We'll come back to city council in the context of Millau Park Community Campus project updates, which is tentatively scheduled on September 13th. But for now, just a quick review of the survey and the aquatics related excerpts. One of the questions was asking people to report which neighborhood of Millau Park they live in. You can see a, a pretty good kind of distribution of, of the neighborhoods. Asking folks, how long have they lived in Millau Park? 54% have lived in Millau Park for 10 or more years. So a good representation of longtime residents as well as newer residents. Mostly adults completed the survey, which is understandable. You can kind of see the breakdown here up in the top right. Also, we asked respondents to self-report which age groups live in their household to just kind of give us a sense of, you know, what are the different age groups in each household? And then turning to the aquatics related excerpts, specifically some key insights from the survey. Here is a listing of the statements that were most often rated either somewhat important or very important. This is a combined percentage. So the survey was structured in a way, and we'll see in a moment, with kind of three levels of importance. Not important at all, somewhat important or very important in response to various statements. So somewhat important to very important indicate relative importance. 93% of respondents rated swimming pools are open year round as somewhat important or very important. And then kind of going down the list here, these give us insights into things that are very important to the survey respondents. That swimming pools are open seven days per week. That swimming pools are focused on the needs of Millau Park residents, that there are free or discounted fees for Millau Park residents, swim lessons for children, open swim and community swim time, adult lap swimming, children and families getting priority for playing social time, aqua size and exercise classes, aqua therapy and physical therapy. These were all rated very highly important by the survey respondents. Couple other insights, 51% of respondents indicated that they never or rarely visit city operated pools, and we'll look at that right down in a moment. But 26% reported that they visit city operated pools once or more often. So again, a pretty good distribution of, of residents responding. Some statements that were most often rated not at all important by respondents, these kind of got the highest percentages, not at all important, 39%. Said swimming pools attract participants from outside Millau Park who are charged higher fees. 34% rated competitive swimming or sports having priority to use the pools as, as not at all important. Then a more general statement about competitive swimming and sports, also 27% rated not at all important. Lap swim priority and then waiting pool and splash pad, kind of rounding out those that receive the most ratings of not at all important. And then we'll just kind of quickly walk through, this information is in the report, but here's kind of what that data looks like in the spread. This question was question number four, how often do you typically use or visit these locations? There was a whole list of locations. This one, this excerpt just shows the swimming pools. You can see between never and rarely, 51% saying they never or rarely visit pool. But over here, if you combine once or twice a week with more than once a week, then you see 26% have said, you know, that's, that's fairly frequently. So just to kind of show you how, how the data works here. Similarly, you can see in the report, a more detailed of a breakdown of, of the relative importance that the respondents reported. that the respondents reported here for the various statements about swimming lessons for children, for adults, and so forth. There's two pages of this particular category here on the slides. And these were just summarized in that list, so just kind of walking through quickly. And we can always circle back to these later if there are questions about specific ones. And again, this is, this information is included in attachment A in the report. So that's a quick summary of the aquatics related excerpts from the community survey, and then a quick summary here of the comparative data that's gone into the analysis up to this point. That's all contained in attachment C. There's a lot of information there. It includes current aquatics data, meaning the current fiscal year or the previous fiscal year kind of post reopening from thirteen municipal jurisdictions in the area. There's also a lot of information collected from right before the pandemic by the Bay Area Public Pool Operators Association, which has over a hundred and fifty members. There also are maps just to indicate the locations of various swimming pools that have, you know, various levels of public access or private, but with some public access, just to give a sense of where they're located. The kind of overarching kind of takeaway from all this comparison is that it is difficult to directly compare different jurisdictions, aquatics programs, whole cloth, because the programs do vary widely in scope and features and programs offered. So you kind of have to compare different components of them. There is no real apples to apples comparison out there. And then quickly, to just summarize the preliminary estimate of what a city operated aquatics program might look like, as stated in the report, the city of Menlo Park directly operates multiple complex and highly regulated public services, childcare, meal service, athletic leagues, municipal water utility, public safety. But the city has not directly operated Burgess Pool since two thousand and six. Well, within the city's capabilities to operate an aquatics program, however, quite a few preparatory steps would be needed in order to do so, because just the infrastructure of the system is just kind of not there at this point in time. There would be budget authorizations, recruitments, new classifications created, regulatory certifications, a number of other preparatory steps needed. Just looking, kind of zeroing in on like personnel and operating expenditures and revenues, a rough order of magnitude estimate for the city to directly operate the Burgess Pool and the forthcoming MPCC pool year round, seven days a week. Rough estimate would be increasing from four point oh to seven point oh, full-time equivalent benefited employees. The specific positions are listed in the staff report. That would be expenditures of between point seven five to one point oh million dollars. Also adding nine ninety to a hundred and fifty or so, depending on season, hard time temporary, non-benefited employees, your lifeguards and instructors and others of that nature, approximately one million to one point seven million dollars expenditures, again, in a rough order of magnitude estimate. Continuing to bear the maintenance costs for the Burgess Pool and ultimately the MPCC pool, the repairs, liner repairs, chemicals, kind of smaller scale renovations and replacements that need to happen with equipment and the facility. Some increase in administrative costs, as we see there. So for total rough order of magnitude estimated annual expenditures of two point five million to three point eight million, and estimated annual revenues, again, very rough projection, point seven five million to two million dollars. Also, just to give the council a sense of what an initial preliminary estimate would look like, later at the end of the slideshow, one of the things we're seeking some counsel feedback and direction on is what timeframe and to what extent should we continue to refine these estimates? And like, again, when should we undertake that work, if at all? So then moving into the main topic here, I think, is preparing to issue a request for proposals for an aquatics operator at the Burgess Pool and MPCC pool. Here's the proposed timeline for the major steps in such a process, including another city council, a business item, tentatively on September twentieth, for the city council to review and authorize the actual test. So the RFP for issuance, obviously, any feedback received tonight and direction received in that from city council, we're incorporating to that for city council review. Then you can see the various steps there, kind of culminate in January, possibly February, for the city council to identify that preferred provider and authorize the city manager to move forward with an agreement. And again, this would be for services beginning September first, two thousand and twenty-three at Burgess Pool, when the current operator's agreement expires, and then upon the opening of the MPCC pool, which currently is tentatively slated to open at some point in two thousand and twenty-three. So a few of the key questions or considerations that we appreciate city council confirmation or feedback or different direction or additions to kind of come from the resident survey results, the comparative analysis. There have been multiple city council and commission meetings about the aquatics program over the past year, a year and a half, two years in particular, that you led a number of insights. So at this point in time, the staff is preparing an RFP to include these proposed program requirements, among others, these I think are the key ones for councils review. They're not in any particular order here, but numbered for convenience. One is to require the operator to seek city approval for their aquatics user fees, for example, no fees that might be set by the city council on the master fee schedule. The second one would be to include revenue sharing with the city to recover to a greater extent than currently the city's facility maintenance and capital costs. So a good proposal is for a median rate of cost recovery, which is thirty percent to seventy percent of cost. The city's total cost to maintain the Burgess Pool was six hundred forty-five thousand dollars, and we just completed this year. So the proposal is to engineer, you know, the proposal, the request also in the agreements to achieve that rate of cost recovery, similar to seventy percent range. Another proposed requirement would be to require some baseline number or percentage of operating hours to be dedicated to open swim, or just like play and social time, to aqua wellness or therapeutic classes, procedures, and others who might benefit, and a baseline quantity of free or discounted swim lessons for Menlo Park children. And then finally, to require that the Burgess Pool and the MPCC pool offer identical or equivalent operating schedules and programs. So those are a few of the key highlights, of course, city council may have other feedback or direction to provide, and we certainly want to hear about these four items as well. And with that, we reached the conclusion of the presentation here. Here's just a part on the screen, that staff will incorporate city council's direction received tonight into the draft RFP for review and authorization on September twentieth. Here are three of the main discussion items that the staff is seeking, some feedback from council about, including proposed program requirements for the RFP, which we just looked at, any other elements of requirements the city council desires, and then some direction on if, when to compare a more comprehensive operating budget and staffing proposal for a city-run aquatics program, as other than the report. If staff is recommending, it may be advisable to wait until responses received to the RFP before engaging in that level of work. But of course, staff will carry out whatever the city council directs on that in that regard. And so with that, that's the end of the presentation. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. City Clerk Karen, do we have any public comment on this item?
Thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on our study session item F two Aquatics Program Analysis and Preliminary Considerations for an Aquatic Operator Request for Proposals, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you are calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine now. This will be the final call for public comment on our study session item F two. And our first speaker will be Tom McRae.
Hi, my name's Tom McRae. I'm the coach of Solo Aquatics, and you know, really appreciate the staff report, and thank you, council members and mayor, for your time tonight. Part of, part of my concern has, would be that we kick around numbers. I know in the original process of opening the pool was thrown out, the original number was a million dollars, was what Morgan Hill was subsidizing the pool as. And I know that there was a survey done among communities to find out what those communities were actually going ahead and paying in terms of subsidies, but hadn't operate the facilities. And so part of it is kind of looking at from, from the actual fact that, that Solo was the only other person, that other group that offered to run the pool. And in that RFP, one of the things was twenty thousand dollars a month, which was the interest payment on the loan. And Solo bid that, but that wasn't, in the whole process, that wasn't actually the way that things worked out. And it was originally then a three thousand dollar payment from Menlo Swim and Sport. I think that based off their operation of the facility, there should be some pretty good numbers in terms of what, what that revenue is that's coming in. And I know that recently, when the discussion was, was brought up, that some of the numbers are a little cloudy in terms of, of how much revenue is coming in and, and what fees are paid out. I can only tell you that at a hundred and fifty-four dollars for a private swimming lesson, or a hundred and fifty-two for a private swimming lesson in Menlo Park, that's a pretty high number. And so it's somewhere in this process to kind of look at and say, hey, we need to have, bring down the cost to the residents of Menlo Park and make it so that it is accessible. But being able to research those numbers is crucial to be able to move forward on an RFP, and then to be able to look at what the city wants in terms of direction. So if the city would want more open rec time, for example, there's going to be less, less activity that happens during that time, and that's what we already have. So we have a, we have a facility at Burgess Pool that's operated to full maximum of dollars in the operator's pocket, and it's not necessarily for the community use. So I look forward to the process. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So this will be the final call for a public comment on item F two. Seeing no further hands. Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you. We will now open for a city council discussion. Who would like to start? Vice Mayor Wilson, Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. Just have a question for Mr. Reinhardt, and that is, how often does in-service training need to occur? And is this something we can put in the RFP? You're on mute, Mr. Reinhardt.
Always got to be at least one of those every, every, sorry about that. Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. That's an excellent question. I can't say off the top of my head how often in-service trainings are required, but we certainly could include that requirement in the RFP.
Okay. And my next comment, and this is to make sure that the, the pool is accessible, both the existing service and then the future. Is it possible to do an activity shuttle or something to bring folks that do not live near the Burgess campus to the pool? And then in the future, when the new pool is opened, the same thing, just thinking about shuttle service, getting people out of their cars.
Another excellent question, might require some coordination and follow-up with public works related to like, what are the existing shuttle routes and what would it entail to offer a shuttle and what would be, you know, like the cost benefit there? But we can certainly look into that as part of this process.
Thank you. Hopefully, we can tap into the existing service.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
First, thank you, Mr. Reinhardt, for your presentation and for all of the survey data that was provided, as well as comparable information from other communities. A lot, a lot to go through here. I also want to thank Tim Sheper for moving forward with the one-year contract, so we have this opportunity to really evaluate what we want as a community at a high level. I did skim through, there's a lot of the, of the comments, the open-ended comments in the survey, and it really looked like they kind of fall into two main buckets. One are people that are really, really excited and happy with the current distribution of programs, and then some folks that would prefer more swim lessons, lap swimming and free swim. And I think that right now, Tim Sheper has really created a sense of community among the people who use the pool. But I think as the council members, it's our job to really look at the, the whole community and what all of our residents are looking for. And so first and foremost, when I'm thinking about the pool, I'm thinking about, you know, serving our residents first. And of course, we want to be a welcoming place to others, but pools are such a limited resource that I think in this case, we really need to keep our residents at the top of our priority list. Other priorities, as I was thinking about this from kind of a higher level policy, are community safety and health and wellness and, and community. And so as I'm thinking about, you know, what's, what's the purpose of the pool and who is it serving? For safety, I mean, I think we really need to focus on teaching residents to be water safe, primarily children, but I think it looks like there's some adult programming too, keeping people healthy and well, people of all ages and abilities, and building community, primarily for residents. And so when I'm looking at kind of the current mix of programs, a lot of the competitive programs, while they may build some community among, or they probably do build community among those participating, when you look at kind of the distribution, and I have some old data, I don't know what the current data is of who utilizes some of these services. I think we really need to look at, you know, the resident versus non-resident participation and usage level. And so what I'd like to see in the RFP is really how do we incentivize resident usage and incentivize those priorities of safety, health and wellness, and building community? And then for the kind of secondary usages, which in my opinion have to do with more competitive swimming and, and non-resident things, to have those be not as, as high of something that we're trying to attract. And so if that means coming up with a pricing structure, so if it's non-residential usage or, or some of our lower priorities, that the, the money needs to come back, a higher share has to come back to the city. But, but putting something in there to ensure that we're getting what we need out of it. And I know that this is, you know, potentially, you know, a pie in the sky concept. I know that the pool is, is very well subscribed right now. And, you know, by changing the, the mix, it could, you know, upset the, the balance, but I think we owe it to our constituents to at least advocate for what we think follows the, the values and the vision that we have for what we want in the pool, and then seeing what comes back in, in the proposals, we can work from there. But we have to, I think it's our duty to put a stake in the ground of what we're looking for and what our residents are asking for. And I'm, I, what else? I guess that's just, those are my initial thoughts. I have some other questions and thoughts, but I'll, I'll give my colleagues a chance to react to my thoughts. Thanks.
Councilmember Combs.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. A question, Mr. Reinhardt, and so, so I'm understanding the option of the city running the pool itself could result in as middle as, as little as, you know, five hundred thousand dollars in annual cost, in as much as, or as much as three million. Is, is that like, because I'm, you know, looking at your, the cost versus the, like the cost recovery? And, and so again, that And and so again, I just want to make it so the most the the city could expect in revenue is is or the most it could expect in cost is 3.8 million. And the least it could expect in in revenue is essentially 0.75 million. Is is that correct? Or am I aligning things that shouldn't align?
Uh, Councilmember, that's that's an excellent question. The the two kind of ends of this really kind of rough scale, they they do kind of slide together to some extent. You know, the the less you expend would likely result in a a lower level of revenues. Personally, you know, the kind of the more that that is expended, you know, to do more elaborate programs, more of them, then, you know, the revenues would be expected to increase. So probably not a likely scenario where the revenues would be like, I mean, the expenditures would be like on the very low end of that scale. And the revenues be like really on the high end. They they kind of slide together, if that makes sense.
Okay, totally. And so then if I'm, if I'm, you know, matching the sort of most aggressive kind of programming in in cost with the most sort of generous cost recovery, that would put a cost at 3.8 million and cost recovery at 2 million. And so we'd be looking at a cost of the additional cost of the city of 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 1.8 million, which are right, or that that would be be in theory, the 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 deficit needed to cover to bring pool operations to to zero at the end of every fiscal year or the first fiscal year.
Yes, with the caveat that this is very much like a rough order of magnitude preliminary estimate that was, you know, based on past operating expenditures at at Burgess Pool and the former Bellhaven Pool and looking at the comparable, the elements of comparable aquatics facilities and and doing some kind of initial filling in of details, just kind of confirm some assumptions and that those comparisons seem valid, but certainly a lot more work would need to be done to refine those figures and, you know, they could change. But but as a rough order of magnitude, yes.
And so I know you're looking for direction with regards to the RFP. And so and there's been this initial analysis of what it would look like for the city to run the pool itself. So has that part sort of you've come to what you think is a key juncture there? And this is the data you're providing council. And at this point, the next step is to proceed with all of the additional sort of data points you need to put together the RFP. Are is there going to be also, from this point, some parallel process by which you continue to collect and gather information as it relates to the possibility of the the city running the pool itself? And again, I don't, I'm I'm sort of exploring, and maybe that was clearly laid out in the software part, and I just missed it. And don't want to give you some, you know, you know, to assume that I'm I'm trying to that that I think one route there is is better than the other. But I am just trying to understand whether this is the data we're going to get as far as like, at this moment, the city running the pool itself and and what we're going to go to now is is looking at what what the RFPs look like.
Again, great question. That's one of the aspects that staff is seeking some direction from the city council of quite a bit of additional effort and and time would be needed to really refine this estimate into a specific budget proposal down at at least to like major expenditure categories and some line items, specific staff. In some cases, classifications don't exist, for example, for like lifeguard. And so we'd need to do a little bit more diving into details of what exactly would that look like and what would the compensation specifically be in the city of Menlo Park? And so I think that we are at this juncture where the timing of when and whether to go that extra amount of effort to develop that detailed estimate is something we're seeking direction, whether that should happen now in conjunction before the RFP is issued. Is council maybe interested in seeing what proposals might come back from the RFP? And make maybe make a decision then as to whether a city-operated products program is is even something that the city council is interested in pursuing further. So so whatever council directs, you know, staff, staff will will do. But we did want to take a pause because of the substantial level of staff effort and time that would entail at this, at this point in time to to get to that that level of specificity that I think you're asking about.
Um, Mr., uh, Councilmember Combs is allowing me to ask a follow up there. So if the council chooses to defer you looking into bringing it in-house until we've had an opportunity to receive the proposals that come in after the RFP, will there be time or how much time would it take to do it? And would we be able to potentially pull off doing it in-house in time? So there wouldn't be any lapse in service. I hope that makes sense.
It does make sense, absolutely. And that's a great question. It gets to the point about the timing. So with the current time of timing, the timeframe for completing the RFP process right now, we're on track to fully complete the RFP process by January, February of next year. So it is possible to complete all of that prep work between, like, say, January and September 1st. So it it is possible to, you know, really engage with with that effort at that time, if that's what the city council decides. So yes, to this time.
Wait, one more question. So in switching to to the RFP, one of the elements or requirements you had in there was this idea that that an operator offer equal services or programming across both pools. Give me some sense of how that actually looks. Because again, pre, certainly, we we don't know with with the new pool, because it'll be a new pool and people like new things. And so maybe, you you know, there's gonna, well, we hope, right, that there's going to be an increase in in its its usage. But pre, with the old pool, of course, the the usage was a lot less than 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 the the Burgess Pool. And so I'll just sort of, like, I I have concerns, like, if we're constraining the ability of an operator to reflect the demands that will likely vary across the the two pools. I very much am in favor of this idea of for the MPCC, there being a minimum sort of like expectation as far as some of the programming or services that that are offered. But but I have concerns if we're saying that, like, you you know, if you have, like, you know, two baby swim classes at Burgess, does that mean you you also have to offer two baby swims classes at MPCC, even though the demand might be there in reverse, like, right? There may be some demand that that really exists at MPCC that may not as be be as great. I think you get the impression, so I won't be quiet.
Yeah, I I appreciate the 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 nuance there that you're bringing out, because it's an important one. You know, I I think, you know, what staff has gathered from community commentary, certainly city council feedback is when it comes to that equivalency that kind of start with the big things like being open seven days a week, of being open at hours that are accessible to the community and being open year round or accessible year round and having that be the case in both locations, being maybe some of the the fundamental pillars there. Then, as you kind of drill into, you know, specific programs, you know, to some extent, those those can kind of vary, I think, from site to site, just depending on kind of what the usage and and demands are. And I think, you know, to constrain to that fine of a degree could actually, you know, be a a little bit onerous, I think, for an operator. I I'm just, you know, using the example of some city programs that, you know, operate at the Burgess Campus as well as at what the former Anetta Harris Campus and so the MPCC Campus that you have, the goal was to have facilities open like the same hours, the same days of the week, and to have a general equivalency among programs, but with the understanding that there will be some, you know, variances depending on, you know, the the hyper local kind of need for users. So I I hope that kind of helps answer the question, but that that's kind of what we were just wanting to confirm with the council, you know, sort of that 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 priority, that layering, if you will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I very much agree with what is being said as far as, yes, we need equivalency as far as the pools are open, similar, the same hours, days. But the programs, programming may be very different depending on needs and all. I guess my first comment is the operating hours, which are listed several times here, it seems. I believe it should be, we should be looking at lap hours because the pools are often split with activities. I'm not sure exactly how that figures with operating hours. But I think that it would be beneficial just to have lap hours when it's open swim or something. You certainly, you still have a certain number of lanes that are taken up with open swim, so that I think that that would be a a good metric to use. Lane hours. I'm sorry, lane hours. Thank you. Yeah, lane hours. And I'm wondering, when you're looking at providers running the pool and just being, are we at any point considering having or do other cities and pools have the the operator actually perform some of the maintenance and take care of some of what we're now doing? Or I don't, I guess I don't need an actual answer at this point, but I'd certainly like that considered. And what is the best approach and perhaps allowing the people responding to the proposal to actually make suggestion if they have a different, think a different model would work better, just so that we leave lots of options. The Redwood City Kirkner Pool RFP, which I think you've are aware of, it would be a very good comparison to what we currently have. And they have a few, for example, they do quarterly reviews rather than annual reviews, things which I think would be an improvement. I won't go through all of the comparison. I'm I'm assuming that you will, and I'm very happy that Ms. Tricia Olin is on staff with experience and met her and think she's will be a terrific asset. Thank you. I agree with what my colleagues have said and don't really have a lot to add beyond that. I think that we do need to prioritize residents. We do need to look at the programming and how that's serving the needs of our residents primarily. And I agree that we need to be looking at the in-service training, be doing, have strong rights for inspections and just more check-ins and quarterly more often. What additional, Council, Vice Mayor Wilson?
Um, thank you. I had a ton of notes. And so I appreciate the opportunity to speak again. First, I just want to say, I realized when I was reflecting on what I said, that I made it sound like competitive swimming isn't, doesn't build community. And I just wanted to reiterate, especially I've heard from the masters folks. I was thinking more like, anyway, I I'm just thinking of prioritization on the hierarchy. But I do understand how people feel that they have almost a second family with some of those programs. I I wanted to, I like the idea of the lane hours in terms of of it. I also want us to consider not just how many hours, but the quality of the hours, because some hours are more desired than other hours. So I know people, you know, they work and they want to spend before and after. So there can be a bit of a jockeying for kind of prime time swim hours. So when we're looking at the distribution and prioritization of programming and the hours, some consideration to how those decisions are made and what kind of prioritization there is. I I wanted to, in terms of the length of the contract, I I didn't see anything in the RFP about that. But curious to hear staff thoughts or if that would be part of a a negotiation. I'm thrilled to hear that we have hired a new supervisor. I do think that there should be an expectation in the RFP of additional oversight. I know that was one of the areas that staff was bringing forward, that the provider needed to check in on on fees. But I think there needs to be really clear expectations on working with city staff on checking these hours, on how subscribe different programs are and if if priorities need to shift around given demand and things like that. I absolutely agree with my colleagues on kind of the Bellhaven Pool versus the Burgess Pool in terms of that structure of hours and and but leaving the programming a little more open. And also thinking a little bit about programming across the pools. So if we're oversubscribed in one pool and there's excess capacity in another pool, thinking about how we can best structure things. Again, keeping in mind the prioritization of the residents and the swimming and the safety and the wellness programs. I was thinking, if we do have more prescribed, you know, minimum lane hours on in certain programs, if, you know, demand isn't there or a change needs to be made, you know, there could be something to where the provider could, you know, make a case for why a difference, but there should be a default to that and and some kind of justification requirement. And then reporting requirements on residents and non-resident usage of of all the programs. And I think I I think that's it. So so going through the questions that staff was asking, I think there were four questions. Yes, the city approval for aquatics fees, I would actually expand that to and and make that even broader city approval. Revenue sharing, I think it's, you know.
Yeah. Can we put slide, I believe it's slide 21 back up on the screen? And then also, I think we're going to want to go through 22.
Yeah, the revenue sharing makes sense to include. We've talked a lot about the the lane hours and the the mix of programs and really prioritizing residents. And then we've talked about the similarities and between Burgess and MPCC. So I think I've given all of my thoughts, but thank you.
I would also like to include that, which I thought I saw in here, but I'm not, that the city has the operator has to run the, has to get approval from the city for subcontractors and for additional programs. One of the things that I think is sort of competes is if we have an, when we have an outside operator, just what the programming is. And I'd like the city to maintain more more control, more just approval of how the programming in the pool works, just a check and balance with the operator. Could you put up that, well, I guess, up slide 22, please? And seeing that, I'm not sure there's anything additional. Mr. Reinhardt, are there additional? Is there additional information that you need? And I guess I would say that I would be also interested in holding off on a deep dive, staff diving into what the requirements are for city-run program until after we see what the responses are to the RFP. Councilmember Combs.
Okay, thanks. Um, so supportive of mostly what I've heard from my my colleagues and and also the idea of of holding off any additional and also the idea of holding off any additional analysis on on the pool program being run by by the city until we see what the response is on the RFP. One final question, though, Mr. Reinhardt. While I'm not necessarily opposed to some of the additional requirements that my colleagues want to to add to the RFP, I do have a concern that that could scare off a chokes on dance, and so how do, if someone can give me some insight, like if I'm responding to an RFP and I see some element that I don't really feel like I can respond to, does a person in that case essentially say like, well, I'm not going to respond to that, that RFP? Or do they just ignore it or say, well, we don't think that this is viable? And is there some sort of verbiage we could use that doesn't let them off the hook for it, right? If if it can be delivered, but offers some flexibility, so so we're not getting to. Again, I I don't want to, you know, we have had RFPs since I've been on council where we went out and no one responded, right? And we've had RFPs where only one, you know, entity has responded. And and again, I don't know the operating public pools world, world, maybe there is a bunch of participants that are just going to be jumping into this, but I do, again, to to get to the point, I do want to like, again, I support what my colleagues are asking for and think is valid, but but do want to sort of open up the possibility that if a potential entity or operator sees some constraints that they feel that they may not be able to meet, that that they, but they feel that the thrust of what we're asking they can that they, you know, that they still respond to their RFP.
If I may respond, excellent observation. One approach staff's considering, you know, to that very point, is looking at the scoring system for for the RFP. You know, to to rate the responses and assigning the points, you know, relative to, you know, those those areas that are our most priority for requirements, and so there's some flexibility that would be built into that type of of schema where an operator, because it is a pretty complex proposition to operate the two pools that would give the operator the respondents, you know, some flexibility to say, well, we might not be able to hit this particular requirement that gets this number of points, but we can hit that one, you know, get all those points and we'll still be competitive. So that's one procedural way we can kind of incorporate that flexibility while still stating very clearly here is, here's what we're looking for.
And we will, reading the schedule, the RFP is going to come back to council before it is released, correct? And I'm assuming, actually, sorry, one more part of that, and that I'm assuming that, again, with staff expertise, especially now with Ms. Mullen here, that you will be able to weed out some of the, if there's any requirements that do not make sense from staff's perspective, and also appreciate that, yes, if we don't, we would rather have more respondents rather than fewer, so as as widely as we can throw this net and then encourage people to apply. That would be beneficial. Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Nash, and one thing that I did not see in the staff report, but I'm hoping is a part of the RFP, and that is what are the best practices running a pool? So, Mr. Reinhardt, I'm not sure if our new staff person has any expertise in that area, but that's something that I would be interested in seeing is what are what are best practices when it comes to running a pool?
Yes, totally agree, and I do believe Ms. Mullen will be a real asset in that regard, so the timing of her arrival is very fortunate for the city.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Wallison.
Thank you, I keep thinking of things. First, Councilmember Combs, your point was what very well stated about understanding that we may need to move on some of these wish list items. So for those who are listening, you know, give us your your offer and and we'll go from there. And I also want to just reiterate to the public that Tim Sheperd is invited and encouraged to apply. This is really kind of a check-in for the community to see kind of where we're at as as a city of what we're looking for, but but the current operator is is hopefully going to apply. I also just wanted to point out pricing. One of the things that that came up a lot in the survey responses and when I was looking across jurisdictions also was our pricing, especially lessons and kind of open swim and lap swim seem to be on the high side. I know we're in the Silicon Valley, but I don't know if that's something that the city council should consider subsidizing more or or the provider puts forward something. So I just wanted to acknowledge that that's something for staff to consider when they're working on the RFP. I don't know how you write that in, but I think I'm done with my feedback on this topic, thank you.
One more comment, and that's just the current programming that is at the pool, I assume would be parts of it that are popular would be doable and with any operator, whether that's the another continues with Mr. Sheperd, changes to a different operator, or in fact, if by chance at some point the city decides to do it, we still would not go about reinventing all the programs. What we would do is, I would assume, as is done in the recreation side, we're, we would be contracting or another operator would be contracting with popular programs. So I just want to can reassure people who are in a popular program that presumably the program could or would continue regardless of the operator. And I guess, Mr. Reinhardt, any comments on that?
Thank you, Mayor, only to agree that certainly is feasible and desirable. The programs currently there that are popular are applicable for a reason. At least the ones that are popular among residents, and we certainly would seek to continue those.
Do you need, Mr. Reinhardt, do you need any additional information, or do you have what you need for this study session?
Mayor, City Council, thank you so much for your feedback, it's been incredibly helpful, and I think that we have all that we need at this point, and we are planning to return with the full text of the RFP on September 20.
Thank you, we'll look forward to it.
Thank you.
Actually, we will retrieve Councilmember Mueller and then move to the consent calendar. All right, with the full speak, Council, we will now continue to consent calendar. Under the consent calendar, the city council may take action to approve routine business items in one motion, unless a city council member, city staff member, or a member of the public requests that an item be discussed or continued to a later date. There any city council discussion or questions on the consent calendar? Councilmember Combs.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. On item G2, so a question for the city manager, and if this has been something that has been discussed, then my apologies if if I missed it. Has there been some talk or discussion about like some of the commissions or one of the commissions, or the planning commission, like returning to some sort of in-person session or meeting? Like, have we had some discussion or talk about like how that would be? How we might even approach a return to in-person commission meetings? I assume like we would start with something like the planning commission, but again, I don't know if that has been discussed or not at all.
See, so to the mayor. So, good question, I know I am not recalling anything recently in terms of those discussions, I think maybe months ago there was, but nothing more recently, so I believe that this is the only room that could accommodate the the meetings at the level of quality that people would expect. And so, yeah, there could be a sequencing of various commissions, and I would agree that probably the planning commission would be the first, so, but I don't, don't recall any recent conversations.
Okay, well, I'll just throw out there that we should start sort of looking at how it might look for the planning commission to return. And again, I'm just saying the planning commission, right, I'm not even talking about any any other other commission. Or even just to like sort of poll those members to see if it would even be, yeah, because if if a majority say they don't want to, then that that answers the question, at least for for the time being. But but again, I think it might have some some value to to at least plant the seed of that that discussion. That that was my only question, thanks.
Great, and since if the, if that's the desire of the full council, we can easily kind of report back since this item appears on every single council agenda, so we can do that.
Councilmember Mueller.
Yeah, I'm I'm growing increasingly anxious to see the city move back to pre-COVID time and fully open and bring everybody back, the rest of the world has. So it's time, I I realize that some industries that aren't service, like some tech companies are having, letting people choose in what area they're coming back, but we are a service organization, so we're, it's time.
Thank you. City Clerk Karen, please call for public comment on the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on any of our consent calendar items. G1, city council meeting minutes. G2, the resolution for compliance with AB 361. G3, the second reading and adoption of ordinances related to special event permits and film permits. Or G4, a resolution modifying the city council's regular meeting schedule for the month of October. Please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine. And our first speaker will be Adina Levin. Adina, I'll ask you announce which item you're commenting on before your comment, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members, and I am commenting on the item that is about the legal disclaimer to be able to have the remote meetings. And I apologize because I am on a mobile phone right now, and I can't see which number that is, but that's the one. And I am glad to hear the interest of the city council members in looking at bringing commission meetings back in person as a former member of a complete streets commission and a member of other advisory bodies on different regional topics. I think that that is helpful and a good idea at such time as the members of the body feel safe doing so. I also think that it would be good for Menlo Park, as many other cities and organizations are doing, is to continue to build on the opportunity to have hybrid meetings where members of the public are able to dial in remotely, you know, using a phone or using Zoom. This is something that, like over the course of the pandemic, has enabled people to participate and engage for whom it would be a burden to get to, you know, city council chambers or planning commission meeting. And the input that is provided is on whole beneficial to the community and to the city. And so we therefore encourage the practice in bringing back more bodies to be able to also continue the ability to have the hybrid functionality for the members of the public, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. This will be the final call for public comment on our consent calendar items G1 through G4. And our next speaker is Jenny Michelle, and Jenny, I'll ask that you state the agenda item you're speaking on, please.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember and staff. This is Jenny Michelle from the Coleman Place block again. And actually, I'm also on my phone remote. And I am also making a comment regarding the same item as Adina Levin. The, I've been watching other municipalities, and yes, the hybrid approach really does work for a cross-section of residents and stakeholders, and I think that are being flexible with everybody who is not able to physically make it onto the premises and physically engage with council for eight hours at a time is very taxing for those of us who work full-time and have children. So I just was taken aback by Councilmember Mueller's remarks, and I just couldn't let that stand. So I just wanted to make a comment, and I appreciate your time again, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Seeing no further hands. Oh, I take that back. Our next speaker will be Jackie Spreen.
Hi, thank you, I didn't actually intend to make a comment, but I would just like to absolutely agree with the two previous speakers that having meetings, having the option of both is way better for civic engagement, and civic engagement is awesome, so please keep it up.
Thank you for your comment. And now seeing no further hands. Nope, one more came up. Okay. So this will be the final call for public comment on our consent calendar items G1 through G4. And our next speaker will be Elizabeth McCarthy, and I'll ask Elizabeth to state the agenda item you're commenting on, please.
Hi, City Council, it's Elizabeth McCarthy. The agenda item, of course, has to do with the noise ordinance. It looks like it's section 8.06-060. And I I I see the new underlined section specifies that special events will be exempt from the noise permit to exceed noise levels. And I know one of my neighbors has sent an email to city council asking city council to classify the concerts at Cafe Zoe as a special event. I just would caution the city council from considering the concerts at Cafe Zoe a special event because they're regular events, there's nothing, they're not like isolated weddings or parties, these are twice weekly. Because they're regular events. There's nothing, they're not like isolated weddings or parties. These are twice-weekly events. And the neighbors that face the coffee shop would would really suffer if. The cafe was allowed to go back to having these concerts with no, no noise level maximum in place. Just want to look over this, see if there's anything else I want to talk about. Yeah, and I guess my question is, what would constitute a special event to the city council? Would like to hear what you guys have to say if that's why that's in there, so that you can give a pass to Cafe Zoe. So I'll be interested to hear what you guys have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Seeing no further hands. Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you very much. And thank you to all the public commenters. Councilmember Mueller.
I'd like to clarify my comment made before public comment, just because there seems to be a misunderstanding. My comment was directed toward our organization, not toward whether or not we allow for hybrid participation of public. When we're talking about commissions and actually commissions taking place, whether they be in person or separate. If they're going to take place in person, that actually requires staff members to be present, commissioners to be present, and the actual operation of the city. It's an ongoing discussion right now with the city council and the city of when we're going to resume full-service operations here at city hall. So my comments were not meant to be construed that I'm not supportive of hybrid participation with the public. My comments are however meant to be construed that I do think we need to start moving back toward being a full-service in-person operation. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we, councilmember Taylor.
Checking in, Mayor Nash, if I can make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Yes, you may.
Thank you. Make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Councilmember Combs.
Yeah, I'll second that. But before I do, I just wanted to give the city attorney a chance to respond to the public comment to clarify. Well, I'll say it, and then the city attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, that like, at the moment, the Cafe Zoe concerts are not considered. Special events and don't don't come under any protection related to what what is the vision item and consent calendar. Just want to confirm confirm that for the for the the public comment.
Yeah, I agree with what's on consent tonight is the establishment of a film permit ordinance. There's no noise regulations that would apply broadly throughout the city in this ordinance.
All right, can I second?
Councilmember Wilson, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Wilson.
Thank you. I just wanted to, the city manager had asked if there was direction regarding. I didn't know if you needed a specific, like a majority of us to say we're in favor of pulling the planning commission to bring them back. But I'm I'm generally in support of both councilmember Combs and councilmember Mueller. In terms of their sentiments and also with the public speakers of keeping public participation at these public meetings hybrid. So just wanted to point that out.
City manager Murphy.
Let's see, so happy to kind of report back at a future meeting. I don't think we're quite. On topic, but I appreciate you sharing your sentiments as well.
Thank you. City Clerk Karen, would you please state the motion and call for the vote?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Nash. So we have a motion on the floor by city councilmember Taylor and a second by city councilmember Combs to approve the consent calendar. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none by roll call vote, city councilmember Combs.
Yes.
City councilmember Mueller.
Yes.
City councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
Yes.
Mayor Nash.
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Public hearing. Public hearings are a formal procedure proceeding held in order to receive testimony from all interested parties on a proposed issue or action. The first public hearing is H1, adopt a resolution amending the city's comprehensive master fee schedule for the city manager's office. Community Development, Library and Community Services, Public Works Departments. Menlo Park Municipal Water and amend the user fee cost recovery policy. To introduce the item is interim finance director Marvin Davis.
Good evening. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, did my video start? I'm not sure if it started.
No, we're not able to see your video just yet.
Good evening, Mayor Nash and Vice Mayor Wilson and council members. Members of the public as well as staff. And this item is the update of the city's master fee schedule. And staff has collaborated with department heads to update the master fee schedule. And I have a two or three slides to review, just the key points of the of the schedule. The prior user fee schedule was driven by the cost of service study. Received in 2018 for fiscal year 18 and 19. And it is, it covers this this user fee update in the sense that the policy. Requires about a five-year comprehensive study if we're making sweeping changes. And this update does not cover sweeping changes. And so the the cost of fees study could cover this, provided there are not significant changes to the cost structure of the city. And so I have reviewed the city's policy on user fee recoveries and believe that this. This request to adopt is consistent with the policy in terms of. The cost recovery associated with different elements of the city's cost. Department heads are standing by if council members of public have questions regarding different aspects of the cost recovery. And so. This particular update will cover. The fees associated with different services. Property as well. One of the big changes, one of the big requirements of this is we're asking council to waive. Permit fees associated with electrification for this particular update. And the cost, the master fee schedule was would not waive this in the future. It would only waive for this particular update. Also.
Marvin, can I ask you to put this presentation in full screen if possible?
Okay.
If you're using Adobe, you might want to try Ctrl H.
Okay.
And then can you zoom in at all?
Let's see, can we zoom? Can we make it bigger, right?
Correct. There we go. That's better. Thank you.
Okay, good, good. Okay, so the elements of the master fee schedule that's going to be recommending. An attachment A is underneath the city manager's office associated with the electrical vehicle charges, station fees. And then it's amended waiving of the permits associated with electrification of buildings. And I think our estimate is somewhere in the nature of about 130,000, 170,000. Annual revenues. Again, these are just estimates. The community development department also has recommendations of signage. Swimming pools, lava, and community services has some recommendations regarding fees associated with their area. And Public Works has some associated with their area in terms of fees for boxes on the street. As well as interruption of traffic flow in these areas. And so. The main thing is the policy requires adoption of a resolution noted to update the master fee schedule. So the master fee schedule in itself, it's a, it's not a, it's not a project in terms of sequo. So at this point, staff would see, we would recommend if there's. Public hearing and then perhaps there's questions concerning areas of the master fee schedule.
So are you?
I stopped you. Okay. So that kind of concludes my presentation.
Thank you so much. I do have one clarifying question. Actually, I see councilmember Mueller. We will do clarifying questions right now. Oh, okay. Could you explain the duration of this master fee schedule? I believe you said that some of these would not. The electrification fees would not be waived in the future. And I'm just wondering how long are, how long does this, how long does this master fee schedule? Last.
That's a good question. The policy. Would request that council adopt a massive fee schedule annually. But until council would adopt a new master fee schedule, this waiving of the fees would be in effect. That's my understanding.
So this would be, the waiving of the fees would be in effect until. The next cycle, at which point there would be another determination whether to continue that or not.
Yes.
But without, but with no changes, they would, it would refer back to fees.
That's my understanding. The the waiving of the fees, it's only, it's it's accurate until the. A new user fee schedule is adopted.
Thank you. Any other clarifying questions? I would like to open the public hearing. City Clerk Karen, could you please call for public comments on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on our first public hearing, H1. Adopt a resolution amending the city's comprehensive master fee schedule for the city manager's office. Community Development, Library and Community Services, Public Works Departments, Menlo Park Municipal Water. And amend the user fee cost recovery policy. Engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine now. And our first speaker will be Adina Levin.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I think I just hit the raise hand feature by mistake and I'm going to lower my hand.
Thank you, Adina. So this will be the final call for public comment on our public hearing item H1. Seeing no hands. Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing and open for city council discussion. Seeing no discussion, is there a motion and a second on the table? Councilmember Combs.
Yeah, thanks. Is, and I'm sure I missed it, but is there a total estimate of the cost of the waivers? Like what what that figure is going to be?
There, no, there was, and I will let Mr. Davis answer. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Combs. That's a good question. The the annual. The annual loss of revenue is estimated between 135 to 175,000. And it's kind of based upon the number of permits that would be coming in. In order to electrify that particular structure. And it kind of depends upon how aggressive the public is in terms of electrifying the structures.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
Yeah, I'll move to adopt the resolution to amend the master fee schedule.
Councilmember Mueller.
Can I ask, when is anticipated, I just missed it in that discussion that this would come back to us again? When this, when is the next time we'll be looking at the master fee schedule?
The master fee schedule, there's no set. The policy recommends annual review, but it it, for some reason, a review is required before that. The council is free to review before that, but typically it's it's required doing budget cycle, kind of review doing budget cycle.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and second it, but I'm going to ask for a friendly amendment that when we hit the, when we hit $150,000. And it just in revenue forfeiture that it be company brought back to the council at that time for determination whether to continue forward. So that we can go ahead and keep track of what the budget hit is.
Yeah, I'll I'll accept that. I do also want to just point out that it, we do have money in this. CAP CIP program, but I'm I'm totally in support of bringing it back when it hits 150.
I'd like to check with city manager Murphy and make sure that that.
I apologize. I did not hear that statement. So I need to repeat. And then I think there's a few different things going on here.
All right, the. The new motion includes bringing back the user fees for electrification. When the subsidy hits $150,000. Vice Mayor Wilson, please.
Um, can I ask councilmember Mueller, would it be possible just to have staff come back and let us know when it comes back and then we can make a determination?
No, I'd like to, well. That's fine, that's fine. So. I would, what would be the difference? I mean, so you're saying it'd be an information item that we hit the 150? Now, I, while I support this, I think that because we have a continuing budget that we've set to, if it starts, if we very quickly exceed the 150. It's incumbent upon council to be keeping track of where it is budget-wise. And so I actually, at the 150, I'd like it to come back and council to have to decide again whether or not it's going to reallocate. Or and keep it going. So, and council may very well decide to do it. I expect that if it's if it's successful, it might. But if the pace is moving very quickly and the budget allocation is more than we would expect, we don't want to be able, we don't want to be in a position. Where we haven't actually considered what the budget cost is and done the trade-offs on other things we're doing as a city.
I would add that in the report, it says that there's $502,000 in the CIP. As Vice Mayor Wilson just referenced, that would cover this. And that it would be, this is one of those carrots that hopefully we get. And I understand that there is a, we definitely should have, keep tabs on what is happening. I'm just. More optimistic if we, if this is happening, that we're actually, it's having a good effect.
I agree. Like I don't, but but also if we look at it, that it's happening rapidly. Then it may be that we're providing too big of a subsidy. Like we have a fiduciary responsibility to figure out how we're using these taxpayer dollars, right? And so I think it's great that we're doing this, like we're piling it out to see what the effect is. If with, I mean, if we get to the end of this and we haven't spent the 150, then we know we have to do something more. But I think because we're doing that, we should be keeping track of it.
Thank you. I'll wait for city manager Murphy. Thank you. I'll wait for city manager Murphy.
Can I just have really quickly, and I hope we don't confuse. But, but, you know, we, we want to encourage this, but encourage it to cost us as cheaply as possible. Like, so we want to encourage it, but we don't want to pay a dollar more than we have to, to encourage the behavior. That, that, that we like, like to see, like, right? I mean, because if people are going to do it anyway, then in theory. You want, you want them to pay the fees associated with doing this, but, but, but we're not fair, and I do feel that we, we do have to have a carrot situation. But again, we don't, you know, I, I think in theory, we wouldn't want to give incentives if. Incentives aren't needed anymore.
Agree.
Let's see, so I think the, the net of some of this is there may need to be a revision to the resolution, but before we. Let's attach the staff report, but before we go there, I wouldn't mind clarifying a couple of things. The one is related to the reference to tapping the CIP funds. I think, I think the staff report said could potentially, I'd rather not necessarily go down that. Avenue, because then it becomes more complicated in terms of. Capital funding, operating funding, so if we just leave that on the side until later, until we. As part of like the mid-year budget, or if there needs to be some adjustments later on, we can, we can deal with that specific funding source. So in terms of being able to report back to council, the. The, the main metric that we'd be able to capture more easily is the volume of these types of permits. Then, then we can translate that into the dollar amount. So the. And these are kind of projected estimates across, you know, eight different types of permit types. So we can definitely report back. It's the exact. Then you format for how we report back. I'd appreciate a little bit of thought to be able to come back with something that's efficient use of staff time to be able to. Report back on it. So I, I think I understand the, the intent behind it. The exact mechanism may be difficult for us to determine tonight.
Councilmember Mueller.
Yeah, I mean, if we had an Excel spreadsheet that had the eight different types and then punched in for each one on account, what the dollar value is. And just fill in every time what happened, hit the permit type, put in the Excel spreadsheet, and then have the tab at the bottom that calculated. Once we hit one fifty, could come back to the council. So that's all I'm asking for. I'm just asking that when, that there be, we keep a running tab on the permits, when it hits the one fifty allocation. Whenever that might be, that it be brought back to council as an information item and a request to council, whether or not they want to go ahead and re. And take a look at what the fee structure is for the permits again.
Councilmember Combs.
Yeah, I'll say I'm generally supportive of that approach. If, for reasons of which I don't have visibility into, the city manager really prefers like the, the number of waivers. I, I think the idea is that you would just associate like. An average cost of each waiver, like across these different classifications. And then you could sort of, I mean, because it's like, it's not like, we're just looking for a robust signal or benchmark, right? And so like if, if I, I don't know like how many, what the average of these, these fee waivers are. You know, that divided by one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I'm fine with, once you reach that number, then, then that being the, the trigger. At least again, just speaking for myself, because I know it's, it's not about like an exact dollar figure, but once we get into some territory. And so if it's easier to have a number, then, then I, I would be comfortable with that approach too.
Is there a way that we can proceed tonight with this resolution and come back with some approach? That would handle the need to just have. Great transparency with. This item.
Perhaps like it, could I weigh in on it, Mayor Nash?
Please.
Okay, yeah, we, this won't be a problem for staff. We will count the number of permits coming in associated with this type of work. And then we will have staff in assigned a, a typical dollar value that we would have charged for those permits. And as we track it, once it gets to a certain amount, we will, we will bring it back.
City manager Murphy, how would you like to handle this at this point? Would you like?
I appreciate you taking a break.
All right, let's take a break at this point and ten minute break.
Having our full council back to our in-person and virtual days, Mayor Nash, may reconvene in the meeting.
Thank you. Councilmember Mueller.
Yeah, so for the purpose of passing this tonight, what I'd say is that we don't need to include the language in the resolution. That, that the resolution would be limited at the one hundred and fifty thousand dollar mark or any number of permit mark. What we can do is pass the resolution at the same time with direction to staff that when that dollar amount is hit roughly. That they would return to us at that time, so we could go ahead and consider how we would like to proceed. But that way it can go ahead and be passed this evening with the direction accompanying it. So I would offer that as the friendly amendment to Councilmember Wilson's original motion.
Yeah, absolutely accepted.
City manager Murphy.
Yes, I appreciate that, and that works well for staff. Thank you.
Excellent. City Clerk Karen, could you please state the motion and call for the vote?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Nash. So we have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Williston and a second by city council member Mueller. To adopt a resolution amending the city's master fee schedule to incorporate proposed changes in fees to become effective immediately. August twenty-third of two thousand twenty-two, or as required by statute for the following departments. City manager's office, community development, library and community services, public works, Menlo Park Municipal Water. Direct staff to include when electrification revenue forfeiture reaches one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The master fee schedule is returned to the city council and amend the user fee cost recovery policy. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote, city council member Combs.
Yes.
City council member Mueller.
Yes.
City council member Taylor.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Williston.
Yes.
Mayor Nash.
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. The last public hearing is H2, adopt a resolution to abandon the public service easements. Within the properties at one four one Jefferson Drive, one eighty Constitution Drive, and one eighty-six Constitution Drive. Menlo Uptown. To introduce the item is Associate Engineer Eric Hinckley.
Good evening, Mayor Nash and city council members. I'm here tonight to present a public hearing requesting that city council adopt a resolution to abandon public service easements within the properties at 141 Jefferson Drive, 180 Constitution Drive, and 186 Constitution Drive, commonly known as the Menlo Uptown Project. To provide a little background on the project. The project was initially approved in September 2021. More specific to this abandonment process, on May 24th, 2022, city council approved the final map for the project, which established new public access and emergency vehicle access easements. The final map was not used to abandon the easements related to site utilities, rather were using an alternate process. On June 28, 2022, city council adopted Resolution 6748, declaring the intention to abandon these public service easements. That was the initiation of the process. On July 25th, 2022, Planning Commission adopted Resolution Number 2022-16, confirming the abandonment was consistent with the general plan and recommending approval of the abandonment. For visual reference, this slide outlines the location in red of the abandonments proposed, or excuse me, of the easements proposed for abandonment relative to the proposed site redevelopment. Also shown on this diagram in blue are the new easements that would be dedicated and recorded for the site utilities. It's important to note that the new easements for the utilities necessary to serve the project would be recorded prior to recording the abandonment of these easements. In conclusion, just wanted to reiterate the recommended action, which is to adopt a resolution ordering the vacation and abandonment of public service easements within the properties at 141 Jefferson Drive, 180 Constitution Drive, and 186 Constitution Drive. This concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time tonight, and I'll be available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hinckley. Are there any clarifying questions from city council before we open the public hearing? All right, I would like to open the public hearing. City clerk Karen, please call for public comments on this item.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on our second public hearing, item H2, Adopt a Resolution to Abandon the Public Service Easements Within the Properties at 141 Jefferson Drive, 180 Constitution Drive, and 186 Constitution Drive, known as Menlo Uptown, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you are calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine now. This will be the final call for public comment on item H2. Seeing no hands. Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing and open for city council discussion. Councilmember Combs.
I'll move.
Thank you. I will second. City clerk Karen, please state the motion and call for the vote.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. So I have a motion on the floor by city council member Combs, a second by Mayor Nash, to adopt a resolution ordering the vacation and abandonment of public service easements within the properties of 141 Jefferson Drive, 180 Constitution Drive, and 186 Constitution Drive associated with proposed redevelopment of the project site. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, by roll call vote, city council member Combs.
Yes.
City council member Mueller.
Yes.
City council member Taylor.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Williston.
Yes.
Mayor Nash.
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Regular business. Under regular business, the city council considers recommendations from city staff on policy matters or administrative actions that require city council approval. The regular business item is I1, Direction Regarding Filling of Council, City Council Vacancies. To introduce the item is City Attorney Niradorti.
Thank you, Mayor Nash and city council. This item is before the city council this evening to provide direction that will inform potentially the drafting of a new ordinance regarding revisions to the municipal code that speak to the filling of council member vacancies. I'm going to give a brief presentation that will have two parts. First, I'm going to go over why the municipal code is preempted by state law, and then I will move on to discussing the city's options for revising the void sections of the municipal code that are preempted by state law. As you probably saw, if you read the staff report, the elections code is super confusing on this topic, so I did create a flow chart that hopefully will inform our discussion. And I will be going through that flow chart. But first, let me just briefly provide an overview on why we're having this discussion at all. So the municipal code contains a provision that was drafted in 1974 that was probably valid at the time it was drafted, and it directs that the city council, should any vacancies occur, must fill that vacancy by a special election, which has to occur at the next regularly scheduled election held at least 89 days after the vacancy is created. The government code and state law provides that if cities require vacancies to be filled by special election, that the, that requirement must specify that the election be held at the next regularly established election, not less than 114 days from the call of the election. So the city's 89-day requirement is inconsistent with state law and therefore invalid under principles of preemption. So because of that, the city is left with a void ordinance as to how to fill council member vacancies, and where the city has no ordinance on filling council member vacancies, we would revert to the default state process, which I will describe momentarily. If the council does not want to utilize the default state process, then we can obtain some direction on the process the council would like to use, and that is why we are having this discussion. So the government code lays out two processes that the council can utilize, each with sub-processes to fill a council member vacancy. So there's the default state process that I just mentioned, which is if the city has no ordinance requiring or directing how to fill a council member vacancy, or if the city specifically directs that the state process be used, then we use the state default process. The state default process says cities have two options, filling an election by appointment or filling an election by special, I'm sorry, filling a vacancy by appointment or filling a vacancy by special election. And it, for, at least for me, it's really helpful to look at the flow chart if you want to look at it. I am going over the part on the left, and Judy, I'm sorry, do you mind pulling it up on the screen so the public can see? Thank you. So we're going through the default state process on the left side of the screen and on the left side of the flow chart here. If the, under this process, on a vacancy by vacancy basis, the council will determine for this particular vacancy, we want to appoint, or for this particular vacancy, we want to elect, or hold an election. That determination might be made based on any number of criteria, such as city resources to call an election, city resource in terms of staffing to, to call an election, the amount of time left in a council member's term, or any other factors that the city might, that the city council might consider. Now, under the state default process, if the council elects again on an election, a vacancy by vacancy basis, to appoint someone, the duration of that appointment will depend on when the vacancy occurs, and, and whether or not it occurs during the first half of the council member's term or the second half. So now we're on the very, the third line of the left side of the flow chart. So if the resignation occurs in the first half of the term, in at least 130 days between the next general municipal election, and our, our general municipal elections are every two years and even numbered years, then the council can make an interim appointment until an election to fill the remainder of the vacancy. If the resignation occurs in the second half of the term, then the council can avoid election altogether and appoint for the remainder of the term. So again, if we go with the default state process, those are your options under that state process. Then the state laws also say, and cities can adopt their own ordinance that does any one of three things. One is the city can say, and this is what we currently have, just with invalid timing, the city can say a special election must be called after every vacancy. So there's no option to appoint. We just always go to a special election, and then the timing for the special election is also somewhat complicated and so forth in the government code and the staff report. The second, the second option is this very confusing provision in the government code that I polled attorneys at Burke and no one has ever seen the city use, and that requires this mail-in ballot slash petition process where the city can create a process whereby it requires citizens to sign a petition in order to nominate or perhaps even elect council members to fill the vacancy. If the city were to utilize this or to adopt an ordinance with this process, we'd have to establish a petition process. We'd have to have some kind of signature verification process. I anticipate there could be some issues with determining whether or not we do a petition or a mail-in ballot type of process, so we are not recommending this option. The, the other reason that I don't recommend this option is there's this, there's an escape hatch clause in this provision of the state laws, which also says, and if you don't want to use this, you don't have to use it. So it just seems like a meaningless provision, and it's not recommended. There is then the third option under the alternative ordinance options, which is an interim appointment until a special election is held. And this would allow the city council to, this would involve the adoption of an ordinance that would allow the city council to appoint someone on an interim basis until a special election is held. Again, the timing for the calling of the special election is dictated both by the government code and by the elections code, and someone would serve in that capacity on an interim basis regardless, as opposed to the left side of flow chart, regardless of when the council member resigns. The government code specifically authorizes the council member who is vacating his or her seat to participate in the appointment process. And I was going to say something else, and I just lost my train of thought. So I think that, that is a summary of the somewhat confusing process to appoint vacancies. The, the council might start by considering, you know, whether or not you want to change your current process. And your current process is an election must be held. We can keep the current process and just make the timing requirements consistent with state law, so it's not void. Or the council can consider whether or not it wants to add a appointment process to the existing election process. An appointment process, again, if you don't want it to be dependent upon when a council member resigns, then you need to adopt an ordinance under the alternative state process, three options, which would require an interim appointment every time until a special election is held. So with that, I will take any questions.
Councilmember Combs.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. So, so under the default, so currently, the, the process is in conflict with the state, what's required with the state. And so at the moment, what is the city operating under now? Just the default state process?
Yes, because we have a void ordinance, we would go to the default state process. But our ordinance is under this right side, first, first box on the left, a special election must be called. That's what our ordinance is intending to do, but because it was drafted 1974 and contains invalid timing, it, it doesn't do that because it's preempted.
Okay, and so our assumption, though, is that at the time it was drafted, it was not invalid, but
Yeah, that's what we assume.
That draft date or, and today, there's been state, state action. Okay, and so then the default state process is that at the time of the vacancy, or as we're coming to the vacancy or someone, and now they, they are, they're going to step down, the council gets to decide which path, which, which, which adventure it wants to go on, shall we say, versus an appointment or, or a special, special, a special election, right? And so and at the default state option, there is no option, though, for an interim appointment, though, right? Or
There, there is, but that interim appointment is somewhat at the mercy, if you will, of when, as to when the council member resigns, because you can only make the interim appointment if the resignation occurs in the first half of the term.
Okay. Um, okay, totally agree. But if it occurs in the second half, you're making a full appointment for the remainder, or you're calling a special election.
That's right.
Um, I will, I have one other question, but if Councilmember Mueller wants to, you know, chime in on this specific thread, I'm happy for him to do that.
Councilmember Mueller.
Somewhat awkward topic, but the question that I have on this right now is that assuming that a council member is resigning in the second half, under the current, under, so the default state position of appointment would happen in the second half after November of this year, that would trigger an appointment under state law to come after that resignation, right?
Well, no. So, so if we go with the default process that, and the council chooses appointment, then yes, you're correct. But the council could still say, we are only going to elect to fill the vacancy by election.
The council could decide at that time. So under state law, if after this, after November of this year, the council, at the time of resignation, the council can go ahead and appoint under state law at that time, and then decide if it wants to move forward with an election or not.
If it's before, yes, if it's in the first half, that's right.
If it's not, but it wouldn't be, so after November this year, so let's just say hypothetically, a council member is leaving after November of this year, who's in, who's going to be in their second year, past their second year, right? After the November of this year.
December 15th is halfway through.
December 15th. So council member says that they're, because the last act that council member could make would be the appointment of the new, the vote of the appointment of the new council member, right?
That's right.
So if the council member said, look, I'm moving on, but I'm not going to vote to appoint a new council member until after December 15th, that would be, because that would be their resignation, then after December 15th, that appointment took place, the council could appoint someone, and then that, then decide whether or not they wanted to do an election. No?
No, they'd have to appoint for the remainder of the term.
They'd have to appoint a member of the term. Okay, so I guess.
Now, your option, what you've described is on the table. If you move over to the right side of the flow chart, the second row on the right, the council does have the option of adopting an ordinance saying there will be an interim appointment until an election is held. And then, under your hypothetical, the council member who resigns after December 15 would participate in interim appointment until an election is, is called, or until election is held.
Okay, if it aids my colleagues at all, if hypothetically, I'm that council member leaving, I don't plan on leaving until the last possible moment. So I would be staying, if it were me. So I would be staying, if it were me, I'd be staying until. After December fifteenth. I'd be trying to, I'd wanna stay and be part of that appointment after December fifteenth or even in, or even up until early January.
Councilmember Combs.
Yeah, and so maybe this question is for Mr. Murphy. And so, or the city attorney though, to the extent which he knows the history of the city, feel free to chime in. My understanding is that when this sort of, uh, special election or election requirement went into place. It was in response to a tradition in Menlo Park in the fifties and sixties. Of council members when they felt that they, you know, had. Done their, their service. But before the election would sort of resign, like maybe a year or so out. And then give their colleagues. The ability to appoint the replacement. And so you, that you had on the council, I don't know if this is true or not, it's just what I heard. This tradition of, of, of really sort of. And old boys network, I mean, we're all boys. Of, of essentially appointing their friends and then giving them this, this, this. This incumbent, this power of incumbency. In, in that, that some, you know, I, I guess. More progressively thinking, uh, council members got voted in, in, in sort of the early seventies. And sought to do away with this process be, because in, in a very specific reaction to that. That's a story I heard, I, I don't know that anyone in the city can attest to it, but. In, in anyone's exploration of, of this issue, I, I was wondering, is, is. Is there any, have, have, has anyone heard that, or is it just me?
So through the mayor, like I, I can, I can say that I've, I've heard that story, I can't attest to it either. I, my, my, I, I was not here during that.
Just barely missed it, okay, yeah, that was, um, those are all my questions for the moment.
Council, Vice Mayor Willis.
Thanks, since we're asking questions. So in the default scenario. If the special election is called. Until the special election. There, there can't be an appointment, even an interim one, so then the council is down a council member?
If, if the council member resigns in the first half, then the city could opt at that time. To hold and to do an interim appointment and a special election. Because in, under this default process, the council gets to make a choice on a case-by-case basis.
But, but the, but the council can also appoint after, in the second half as well.
That's right, for the duration of the term.
They just wouldn't be, right?
That's right.
I thought, uh, uh. So the first, so looking at your flow chart, and thank you for that. So the first decision the council makes under the default is to decide whether to appoint or hold a special election?
Yes. The, the council can choose to appoint or hold a special election. But that decision is not necessarily like going only down the flow chart. If the council wants to wait and see when the council, when the vacancy occurs, right? So if the council says, like, we want to hold a special election. They can wait until the vacancy occurs and decide if they also want to do a special, an interim appointment. Until the special election. Because again, we, you will set the rules for how you make the appointment. And how you call the special election at what time. But you will not call a special election and you will not initiate your. Yet to be determined process for appointment until there's a resignation. So you don't sit here today and say, like, I'm choosing a point or special elect and I'm like, we'll see when they resign. You wait for resignation and then you make your decision.
So is there a scenario in which. There isn't an appointment prior to a special election?
Yes, yes, so you can decide that you're just going to do a special election. That's what the default process gives you, the choice to do. An election or an appointment or both, depending on when the resignation occurs.
So following up on Councilmember Combs's example of what happened in the fifties or whatever. The only way around that to not give that incumbent advantage. Would be to have a special election with no appointment and then interim. And then to limp along with a four-member council, is that accurate?
That's right.
Well, couldn't you get that person, I, I mean, it wouldn't be tied to this, as, as the former mayor Lee of San Francisco was an example. But in theory, you could get them to promise not to be a candidate, right? And, and so then you could make an appointment. To the position. And if that person is not running, if they see themselves as a caretaker, then there's no way then they will get the power of that incumbency. Right, it, it, again, and there's no, I think legally way, legal way you can bind someone to not run. But, but in theory, again, the scenario, as I, as I pointed out, was only a scenario where the appointment isn't a candidate.
Yeah, I agree with all that.
And can I, I just, just when you say resignation. Do you mean resignation as in the moment that person is not in the seat? Or do you mean resignation as in a sort of post-dated check resignation, as in like. I'm not going to be here on January seventeenth, which is when I'm going to make my resignation effective?
Yeah, so there's, in the case of. I think there's like multiple ways to. Effect a resignation, so they can say, like, I'm resigning tomorrow. Or they can say, I'm resigning January seventeen. Or if they are elected to the county board supervisors on January seventeen. There's an argument that they are necessarily resigned because of the doctrine of incompatible offices. So if they take an oath. To be on, and this is not going to happen here, obviously, but if they take an oath. To be on the board of supervisors, then they are holding two incompatible offices and one of the offices is deemed void. Or they're, they had deemed to have vacated it.
Councilmember Mueller.
Yeah, so the one thing that I just pointed out to my colleagues is that the law allows for the district representative to vote who's leaving. So the very, by the very fact, because we're in districts. And so I just would really hope. In that scenario, the council would consider the fact that to limp along with four council members from the time period of the resignation. To a special election leaves one city, one district in the city unrepresented while waiting. Which I don't think's a great thing.
Actually, um, we should probably call for public comment on this item.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to comment on our regular business item I, one. Direction regarding billing of city council vacancies. Please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you are calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine now. And our first speaker will be. Dean Levin.
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. I'm Dean Levin, Menlo Park resident. And I, I must say that the flow chart and all the dates is rather confusing. But it, it, it does seem like there are some potential principles and, and patterns and. One is the, what Councilmember Mueller had said, which is that, you know, especially in a world of district elections. Having an extended period where there's a district that is unrepresented seems. You know, outside of the. Goal of district elections and so, you know, up. Appointing to fill the seat so you don't have an extended period of time. With an unrepresented district seems like the reasonable thing to do on that principle. And the, the, the other thing is, I, I. The, the, that, the anecdote about the, you know, many decades ago where there was a tradition of people. Standing down and having appointments and therefore having a kind of aristocracy of mutual appointment. Sounds really troubling and, you know, a call to have a, you know, some kind of a special. Process in order to avoid that tradition, but it also seems like that tradition was. You know, a very long time ago and. Just in watching, you know, in, in local governments in many different cities. It seems not that uncommon for. To have situations where council members step down and there is an appointment until the next election. And that seems to happen fairly commonly without creating the aristocracy problem. And so while that, that certainly does seem like a, a, a problem from, from the past. Like I wouldn't necessarily be as worried that if we use that, it might just happen. You know, as uneventfully as it seems to happen in other nearby cities, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So this will be the final call for public comment on regular business item I, one. And seeing no further hands. Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you, we are now officially open for council discussion. Councilmember Combs.
Yeah, thanks, I, I just wanted to follow up to the public comment. The problem wasn't the power of aristocracy, it, it was the power of incumbency. So, let's be clear, and, and I imagine in all of those scenarios where you do have. Councils making appointments and those people run. I don't know exactly what the stat is, but I can promise you it's in that, like eighty, seventy percent of the time those people win. So, because we know about the power of incumbency, so it's, it's not about creating an aristocracy, it's about. It's about a, a small group of people selecting a person to essentially represent. A, a section of the city. And thereby appointing someone who, who again, like I said, then gets to, without ever actually having to stand. For, for, for a vote of, of that district or that area, gets all of the power that comes with incumbency and therein lies. The, the problem. And so I just want to be, to be very clear about that. That being said, I am, I think, much like Ms. Levin confused. So it's hard for me to like have a definite strong opinion about anything when, when, I think confusion is, is the overriding state. I would just say, if we are in the moment where we're sort of giving some, some sense of where we are on this or direction. I would sort of say just, just default to the state process, one, it gives you optionality. And two, you know, it's always current. You don't have to worry about it being updated. It'll always be, be current, whatever, whatever is the state law in it, because it is the state law. And, and so I, I think that that would just generally be my, my default, because I, I don't know what. Overriding reason why I sitting here would feel that, like, we have to go with this very. What, one of the alternative processes, that, that it gives us something. Of, of clear value, that, that's worth that, that, that sort of trade-off. That's generally my thoughts.
Thank you. Councilmember Mueller.
Yeah, so first off, I did, did want to sort of talk about this argument. About, you know, giving, the way I look at sort of the appointment is it is an appointment to fill the seat of a district person. Districtally elected person, the only person who's been elected by that district to actually weigh in on the appointment. And so to, and it's to fulfill their term. So to that extent, like. Folks may not, folks may think, well, you're giving a personal leg up, but actually. The, you know, the way I look at it is, well, person's been elected by their constituency to represent them. They have to leave early or they're leaving early. But they're the only person who's been voted by that constituency and so they're weighing in on who they think. Would be filling out the rest of that term until the election took place and hopefully that would be given some weight. Cause they're the only person ever been elected by that constituency. But secondly, to the point, the discussion tonight, I am fine with the default provisions of the state. Because it does, in this circumstance, provide you the ability to appoint. And then if the council so chooses to say at the next election, they'll call the election. So I think there's enough in there to allow to, there's enough, as Councilmember Combs said, there's enough there. So.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Wilson, do you want to add anything?
Oh, I mean. I'm not really married to any one of these. I do want to just clarify though, that if we go with the default state. This council or a future council, as long as this policy is in effect. Could call a special election and not appoint. And therefore there would only be four.
That's right.
So to Councilmember Mueller's earlier concern about a district being unrepresented. In that interim time, that's the downside of the default. Or if, if we, if we see that as a downside, that's, that's one of the consequences of the default, that that's a possibility that could happen.
Yeah, that's right, I agree.
Well, I appreciate Vice Mayor Wilson pointing that out, actually, I do want to require an appointment. So I don't want there to ever be a scenario in our city where a council decides that they want to proceed forward. Without a district representative until a special election could be called.
I actually have one quick question, if you don't mind, and that's, can you define a special election? I believe in the material, it said that the. Council, well, actually, please, could you define?
So a special election is any election that is not at the regular municipal election time, which is the November of. Even, even years. So any election that's not during the November of an even year is a special election.
And so. That basically leaves it wide open.
Well, there are dates when special elections can occur. That you'd have to give me a minute to pull those up. But they can occur in March, June. Excuse me, Judy, I don't know if you happen to know, and I shouldn't put you on the spot, you probably need a minute also.
But essentially on, on specific months, they must occur on specific months, that's good enough, thank you.
And I can, if you give me a second, I will pull it up.
For my purpose. Councilmember Combs.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I share the concern, I would point out that, again, this is one of the downsides of, of district elections, like, right? And, and again, with the whole redistricting process, one of the concerns I had was this idea that people would go six years. If they were moved from a district. Like where they were coming to a vote and, and they were moved into a district during, during this period that had an election that was like four years up. Then they would, again, like I said, go six years without having, without voting in, in a, in a council election. These, these things happen and, and so you may have some period where in a district election scenario. There is some period if a council decides to go with a social election. Again, I'm not, not saying that's. What I'd say would be my, my preference, but again, again, one of the trade-offs is that you may have some period where, where. That constituency isn't represented on, on, on council. There have been scenarios though where certainly in larger cities where there are council staffs. Staff members that, that there are still staff members attached to that district, right? And specifically engaging constituent services. And so you could have a scenario here where, again, if there is some period where you don't have. A person representing that district, there still becomes a, you know, a, a, the, the council makes a specific decision that, that, that there will be a known staff person that will, will engage in constituent services. So that, that at least those concerns.
So that that at least those concerns about like potholes or stop signs or all of that stuff will will get fed into the bureaucracy. Again, that doesn't replace the absence of having a representative on the council. But but like I said, I I do think that that is that's, you know, just one of the trade offs. I I think that that happens in a district system.
It's actually interesting that you mentioned that because it makes me realize that there is group of residents who were in District Four are now in District Five, and this would actually give them an opportunity to vote. Right now, they are waiting six years to vote. This actually would give them an opportunity to vote if it plays out. Councilmember Mueller.
Yeah, I just would really like to enshrine that we're going to appoint someone until the special election. I mean, if you were to look at how it played out this year, I think in January, what we'll be looking at the housing element. Also looking at potentially if Meta gets delayed, which I hate to say to you folks out there. But there's a whole bunch of things that'd be happening. And I don't think this council would necessarily not appoint someone, but I just think it's good policy to always do that. So.
Yeah, I would all just very quickly add that, like, in those scenarios where if you are down the four, and because you mentioned Meta, and then you have a councilperson that's recused, right, then then you may be at 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 three people. And I don't know, I know there are some provisions where you actually have to have four for councilmembers. So I don't, I I don't know what happens in in those scenarios where there is some regulatory requirement that that you, I know, like, right, related to the U T. We needed, I guess it changes if if the body doesn't have four members that benefits. But I think to Councilmember Mueller's point, it it you could very quickly get into a situation with some really substantive, important issues before the council where you're down to a really, really small number of 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 people discussing it and deciding.
Thank you, Councilmember Combs. And I and I sometimes those things aren't even planned. They come up in urgency items. So as well. There's one last point I want to make, and that's that I did not ask for this item to be on the agenda. I want to make that clear to residents. Like, I did not ask for this. I am not like, in any way thinking anything is going to happen or making plans on that. So it appeared on the agenda and as such a weighing in comments on it.
Just confirming that, yes, that was something that we felt was prudent to bring forward.
Not arguing it, just want to make clear, not me.
Councilmember Combs.
But yeah, so I I just want to verify the what the question I I have for the city attorney. As far as you know, if someone is appointed, right, you can't like sort of there's there's no sort of legally binding way to say that, like, oh, and you can't run for the position, like, right? If there is a desire to, like, again, have a caretaker to have that the that district represented but then to not necessarily want to give someone the the power that comes with incumbency.
I have not looked into that exact question, but my assumption, as you already said, is that would be like a pretty vast interference with the right to hold office.
So if we would like, if we decide to make an appointment, what are the options as far as holding an election or not? If it's if we go with the state code, then we cannot hold, if we appoint, we cannot hold a special election if it's in the second half of the term. Is that correct?
If the, I I think you have to reverse the way you're thinking about it. So you're not, you don't bind yourself to a particular course of action until a vacancy occurs. Or until the council decides, like, we will appoint until the vacating seat council member says, I will resign contingent upon an appointment. But until you have a resignation or until you have a commitment that the resigning council member wants to appoint where the appointment would trigger an automatic resignation, then you make the decision on election or appointment upon resignation. And that then dictates whether or not you have an appointment, an interim appointment or an appointment for the remainder of the term. That's why I think you need to reverse it. You don't, you don't bind yourself to election or appointment before you know what's going to happen. You don't have to do that.
But following what I think is the sentiment that I'm hearing, and I also feel up here that it is important for district representation to have someone in the seat. Is there an option where one appoints, there's a resignation, council appoints someone, and then there is a special election if it's in the second half of the term?
No.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
My understanding was that was a possibility, not with the default option.
Oh, yes, that's right. But she started her hypothetical with under the default option. Her hypothetical was in the default state process.
And what is, could you explain the default? Because I think at some point there would just speaking for myself, there's, there is a point at which it doesn't make sense to hold an election, and we would just go ahead and do an appointment. How does one, how does that play out?
So the way it plays out is that you can make an appointment and the duration of that appointment will depend on when the resignation occurs. So if the council member resigns in the second half and you want to do an appointment, that appointment is for the duration of the term. If the council member resigns in the first half and you want to appoint, then the appointment is an interim appointment until special action is held.
That's under the default state process.
That's right.
But my understanding was there was another.
Yeah, so then the council, if the council doesn't want to do the default state process, then the council can adopt an ordinance that says every time there's a vacancy, the council will fill that vacancy as follows. One, they will appoint, make an interim appointment until a special election is held, and then two, they'll hold the special election.
So I think I'm building off of Mayor Nash's scenario. If if there's a a regularly scheduled November election for that seat and it's March and someone resigns, and so you're following the special election interim appointment alternative that we've been discussing. Can you just punt the special election until that November date? Or do you have to hold the special election in a certain amount of time?
You have to hold in a certain amount of time, and I'd have to pull up that timing. The special action has to be held on the date of the next regularly established election or regularly scheduled municipal election to be held throughout the city, not less than one hundred and fourteen days from the call of the election. So it has to be one hundred and fourteen days out.
Councilmember Taylor, would you like to add anything to this discussion?
Thank you, Mayor Nash. At this time, no.
And you are looking for direction at this meeting?
Yeah, we we are going to bring an ordinance back at the next council meeting. So that it's effective before November.
Councilmember Combs.
But just to be clear, if the council doesn't act, what's currently in place is is the the state default ordinance.
That's right. And I would probably still bring an ordinance back that that strikes the invalid provision of the municipal code, just so that we aren't faced with a scenario where we have to take a position on a challenge that that provision is void. We will just make it clear that it's void and the state default provisions apply.
Does anyone want to take the lead on this?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I I don't want to take the lead to to answer your question directly. But obviously, if if someone because if there is some desire to see one of the alternatives, then then I you know, someone needs to sort of sort of sketch that up and make that argument. And that's that's not.
So I would, actually, Councilmember Mueller, did you want to add anything?
No, I mean, the honest truth is, I think for myself, I got so caught up in like what this is and what that is and trying to understand it. The truth is, the just sort of move to what the outcome determiner is, what the outcome turn is, is that if that day comes, I'd like to appoint someone if possible so that the district isn't left somewhat left. So if this happens in a circumstance, I'd like the council to appoint someone so no district is left unrepresented from some period of time. And then like the council then thereafter to have discretion, whether or not they want to go ahead and call a special election or not. So the question that this council could decide now is whether they want that council to have discretion or not. Because you could decide, so just looking at outcome, you could decide we're always going to appoint and at the next special, and then the next special election, we're always going to have the election. Or you could decide we're going to appoint or and then leave it up to the council at time to decide if they're going to have a special election, let the person serve out their term. Right? It seems to me like the policy determination for me is the second part. Does it, do we leave a council, this council or future council, whatever council discretion decide whether or not they're going to call an election? But for me, the first part, I don't, like, I'm so, I am absolutely, there needs to be an appointment.
So well, I will just say, I agree. I think that there needs to be an appointment. Where I am still stumbling is what that next step is. Because I think that depending what, when in the term it is, it falls, I would feel differently about whether there's a special election or not. And it seems that the state mandated code actually prescribes that so that if it's in the second half of the term, we could not have a second election. We could not have a special election.
So you can, you can choose election if it's in the second half. It's just that if you want to appoint in the second half, it has to be for the duration. But you can always choose election if you go with the state default.
Sorry for the interruption, but then we have at least one hundred thirteen day vacancy because we cannot appoint for that time. So if we believe that we do need an appointment, then that leaves us either with one that is an alternative process, which we prescribe, but then it sounds like there is not much leeway as to whether or not we call a special election.
Well, if the council is concerned about a long gap, you know, a long vacancy and a long period of time within which there would be a four member council, then depending on that time period, the council can appoint for if the council can fill the election, I'm sorry. The council will have the option to have that seat filled through one of the appointment options, right? Either appoint an interim until there's a special election or appoint for the duration. So if you choose the default, you never have to, you are never going to be in a scenario where you have to have a four person council.
Councilmember Combs.
Yeah, I I think it's sort of, again, and I I'm just seeing it through the framing of the default option, it it is what what's the priority? And it seems like a lot of the priority here is to not have an extended amount of time where there's a vacancy. And so in that sense, you you take the 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 possibility that someone will be appointed and use the power of incumbency. But that, but that is sort of less worse than a situation where you have a vacant position. Again, you know, and I know I'm the one who has expressed the concern here. But an appointed person having, you you know, all that comes with incumbency is not the worst thing in the world, right? They still have to stand for the election. But but so, yeah, so i- if that's, I think it's what is the council's priority? If it's the priority, and it seems as though the priority here is because the consensus is to not have vacancy. And so in that that sense, you just, again, if you're going with the default state option, then then you just take that 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 means that you know, an appointed person may have may have all that comes with incumbency. And so and I may look at that slightly differently, like, right? Maybe I weigh more towards a scenario where you you're not giving someone that that power. But then, you know, that doesn't seem right. That doesn't seem to reflect the concern of of most members of the council that I'm hearing tonight.
Councilmember Mueller.
Sorry, I don't, I actually, I I'm I'm fine with leaving a council discretion, whether or not they want to call a special election, because it comes to the the thing that we haven't talked about is timing. So in the scenario that someone were to say that they, you know, let's imagine the scenario where you're in your last year, or you're in like a year in your last year and a half, right? So do you really want to force the city to spend the money on a special election, right? You don't. And so you would say, you know, or if you, because, so in that scenario, I think, I think I'm fine with it. So I would say I'm fine with appointment. Oh, I'm actually demanding, I actually very demanding about wanting an appointment. And then I'm fine in the second half just saying it's up to a council whether or not they're going to call for a special election immediately or not. So unless you guys want to do timing, but.
Can you state that one more time?
Yeah, so my, so I was thinking about, initially, I was like, so I'm fine, so I want to do is say if when there is a vacancy, you have to go ahead and appoint. And then with respect to whether or not you call a special election, you can have a council decide whether or not they're calling a special election or have that appointment last for the remainder of the term. Does that, no?
That's right.
Yeah, so that's because, so so the council will appoint, and then at the time of appointment, the council can then decide whether or not they're going to call a special election at the next special election, or whether or not that appointment will be for the remainder of the term.
That's right.
Under the state default?
No, this is what I'm, I don't, I'm not talking about state default. I'm saying, I'm just saying, this is the outcome I'm proposing. Because the the reason why I'm proposing this outcome is because I don't want to be in a scenario where I bind a council's hands to say, you got to call a special election. If really, like, there's so little time left, like, why would you do that? And if there's a lot of time left, I don't think a council is necessarily going to want to take the heat unless they think for whatever reason with, you know, I just can find leaving it up to a discretion. And if it gets abusive, then people can go ahead and change it. But I would say appoint and then let the council decide whether or not they're going to call a special election. You could try to go ahead and try to parse it if you want. So I think right now the state, there's a reason why the state, I mean, we could go ahead and, so we're creating, if we're creating our own ordinance, we could say if it's in the first three years, then you have to call a special election, or if it's the first two and a half years, you have to call a special election. Do you guys want to do that? And then the last year and a half, you don't. But I, the the only thing that I just think, if you leave it up to the council or not, they want to do it, we've modified the state just a little bit to give discretion. So.
Councilmember Combs.
Well, again, I I just think that, like, my my concern is that going again, like I say, outside of the state is is a scenario where, and again, especially as you're going to start being very particular and specific about like, oh, if it's three years out, then you do this. And I I think it sort of increases the chances of of this being sort of like, sort of out of sync with the state, probably fairly soon or at some point, and and then this sort of debate happened again.
then this sort of debate happening again. And I don't know what, what you gain for it. Again, with the state option, at that moment, you can, you can have an appointment, that's, that's still there. Or you can, you can have a special election. If it's, if it's in the second half, then that council has made a decision that they're going to go, if they want the special election, that there's going to be some, some, like vacancy for a period, but the person who takes that, that seat will then be duly elected by the residents. Or the council could say that at that moment, and again, they could make that determination based on what they look, what the city is going to be facing over the, the months ahead, they can make that, that decision. Again, we're talking about a scenario where it's the second half of, of, of a term, that, hey, what's most important is to have, have, have someone in that seat and have that, that, those residents represented. And again, that all exists with, with the state option. And again, the only thing is that you, you have to make that choice if we're talking about the second half, like, right? You have to make the choice of what's the priority. If you go with the state option, is it having the seat filled, or is it, is it, is the priority making sure that you don't give an appointed person the, the power of incumbency? And I'm, I'm fine with a council having the flexibility, looking at what the city is facing over the next couple of years, making the, the right call that, that works for, for the city at that time.
The other piece that, that, I guess any of these provide the opportunity is to get input from residents in the affected district before a decision is made.
Yeah, and I just, that's like a really, I think, again, if you're talking about the second half of a, of a council district, that's a, will be a really powerful signal, because you could get, you know, Zoom meetings filled with people saying that, like, you better not appoint someone to this position, you, we, we better see a, a fresh slate of candidates that we get to decide, or you could get a room full of people saying, hey, you better not try to silence us for the next few months, we want someone in, in this, in this seat representing us.
Councilmember Mueller.
Yeah, I just think, you know, I mean, I've been here long enough to know that you're always going to get, you know, if there's anything controversial going on in the city, you're always going to get people saying, don't you dare appoint. So I just think you're better off, I just think you're better off making a claim, saying, look, you're always in a district, in a district scenario, you're always going to have a representative. Even if it's just for three months, you're always going to have a representative there in case something comes up that's urgent, that there needs to be a representative to make a decision, or there's something that is on the agenda that cannot wait, and so that there, that there's someone representing the district.
City Attorney Doherty, could you explain the appointment process and how that works?
There is no set, set appointment process. So the ordinance can establish the appointment process, or you could adopt it by a separate resolution. But there is no state appointment process. The council determines how to appoint. And we would probably, my recommendation will likely be to use the same process that your city clerk has set up for appointment to commissions.
Councilmember Combs.
I would just, I think Redwood City just did this yesterday, where, where they appointed, and so, and so, so they are close, like, also examples that, that we can, that, that there is some, some.
Yeah, I, I've seen it done a few ways, but it is always somewhat similar to the process you use for appointments to your commissions, where people may apply, and then there is a means of voting and reducing the pool. I've seen cities have appointment processes where they have to come to a majority vote, which has occurred, this process I have seen it apply, where there has been a four-member council, and they sat in the room for 12 hours until someone came around. So there's, there's no set process.
Well, I'm leaning toward, at this point, just given all these different variations, I'm leaning toward just adopting the state process at this point. And if, you know, we can always revise in the future if if we desire to. Councilmember Wilson.
Yeah, I just, I just want to make sure we're all, that I'm understanding this clearly and that everyone's understanding this clearly. If we adopt the state process, the default, there a council, future council, whoever, could not appoint.
That's right.
So if Councilmember Mueller feels very strongly about wanting to appoint, then we should, then we can't adopt the, if, if that's the driving mechanism of representation and not having four council members, then there is, then you are kind of required to do the alternative option. Am I understanding that correctly?
To force an appointment scenario, the only way to force an appointment scenario is to force an interim appointment scenario under the alternative process options.
But can I just add, like, you, you really can't force the appointment, because let's say a council never reaches any sort of consensus, right? So if a council really doesn't want to appoint someone, they don't have to appoint someone. So let's, let's be clear, like, they can, they can say, hey, we've discussed this for four hours, we haven't reached, and so we're going to continue this, you know, continue it again and continue it again. So let's not delude ourselves to thinking that we have some control over specifically how something happens. And that's why I say, going back to the state provision, like, really, it's just enshrining the option that already exists. Even if you go with one of the alternatives, and you think you're constraining the council to a certain course of action, you, you're really not, unless you can say that, like, oh, if you don't appoint, then, like, you know, the police officer's at the door and will restrain you in some way. And that won't happen. So, so they'll do what they want to do.
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
Point well taken. Hadn't considered that.
I, I do think that you there's no perfect option. The state doesn't reserve to you perfect options. And so you can't try to wiggle your way into exactly what you want every time, because the state hasn't let us do that. So the way to preserve the greatest amount of discretion and the greatest amount of variability on a case-by-case basis is to do the state default process, which does not bind you to any course of action when there's a vacancy. Whereas if you choose any of the alternative processes, you are bound to a particular course of action, and you don't get to consider other variables.
Thank you. Councilor Vice Mayor Wilson.
One more point of clarification. So if it's in the second, if the resignation, in the default scenario, the resignation is in the second half, then the appointment is for the full duration, it's not an interim.
That's right.
It's been a few minutes since we discussed this, so I'm going to ask again. So about the resignation, when does it actually take, what triggers whether you're in the first half or the second half?
Well, when the council offers a written resignation or a verbal resignation.
So it is not when it actually takes place necessarily, it could be the same, but it could be that someone knows that they are going to be leaving for whatever reason, and they say in three months, I will be leaving, but the notification is on one side of the two years, and the red, actual leaving is on the other side of the second halves, so that...
I'm sorry, yeah, I didn't understand that question. Yes, the council member can specify a date in the future that they intend to resign, and announcing that date is not itself the resignation. It's the, it's the date that they select, or potentially the date upon which an incompatible office arises.
Got it.
So they, they choose the date.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Taylor, do you have any thoughts on this that you want to offer?
Thank you, Mayor Nash, and, and thank you for the conversation, the discussion and the scenarios. I am leaning towards the default. It seems like the option that makes the most sense.
All right. Do we need to make a motion?
If, if the council is comfortable with a, a motion to provide direction, that's fine, or if you want to, Judy, do you have a preference on how they provide direction?
Um, just looking at how the staff report is written, I don't think there's a motion required, so just taking the direction.
Great.
I want to make clear that actually, I'm not on board with the default. Like, I do want, I do think it's important that it be enshrined, that someone be appointed. So I just want that on the record. I hope in the scenario that, that if it were, any time in the near future were to play out, that the council would absolutely appoint someone, and then if the council couldn't reach an agreement on doing so, that it would continue to revisit the item over and over until there was a representative for a district. So, but I, we're not, we're not there to that scenario yet, and I understand that folks want to default to that tonight, so I don't want to, we spent a lot of time talking about what ifs tonight, so. But I do want it to be on the record. I think there should be an appointment every time, because we're in districts now.
I would just say, I agree with that, but I also think that this gives us the option that if something, anyway, it just, I would assume that councils would make that decision, but this gives us more options out of the gate.
I think that without it being enshrined, you leave open the possibility of politics affecting decision-making at a future time. Personally, I think that, you know, when you're in a scenario where you're in districts, and you get to that point, and the council is going to be forced with making the decision of appointment or not, you run the risk that you're setting it up for abuse. So because a council might decide for whatever political reasons, they don't want to appoint someone for that district. And if, or they, a council might be deadlocked, but you, we as council members and elected representatives, need to force good government upon, and sure, a government doesn't have to do it, but we don't have to pass a budget either. We don't have to, there's a million things we don't have to do, but we create requirements on what we're supposed to do. So.
So I, I right now, there is movement toward the state option. Is there anyone who feels differently? Other, obviously, Councilmember Mueller does.
I'm supportive of the state default option.
I, I'm actually going to, I think representation with the district and limping along with four. Even, I, I'm going to actually go with Councilmember Mueller on this one, but I, I'm not at all upset with the default option. I just think, you know, over the weekend, there was a shooting in District Three, and as the District Three person, I was, you know, got kind of more involved, and something like that happened, and there weren't a council person. So that's just, but I understand the desire for more flexibility, but with this one, I'm going to, I'm going to go with the other one, but I'm okay with the vote, going how it goes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Mayor Nash, I didn't have my hand up.
So you're fine with the default?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. I think we're moving forward. Thank you. Informational items. Informational items are transmitted to the city council in staff's effort to provide an update on matters of importance to the city council. Informational items are not action items. However, a city council member, city staff member, or a member of the public may request to make a comment or ask a question on any of the informational items. City Clerk Karen, do we have any public comments on the informational items?
Thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on our information items, J1, City Council Agenda Topics, J2, Update on the Middle Avenue Complete Streets Project, or J3, Updates About City Hosted Community Events and Observances, please engage that hand feature on the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a land-linery cell phone, please press star nine now. And our first speaker will be Matthew Raskoff. Matthew, ask if you could let us know which item you are speaking on.
I am speaking on the Middle Street, Middle Avenue Complete Streets Commission Recommendations.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Matthew Raskoff. I'm the parent of a first grader at Oak Knoll Elementary. I'm also a member of Oak Knoll Safe Routes to Schools Committee. My son and I ride our bikes together to Oak Knoll every day. Given where we live, we take another route to school, and we don't actually ride on Middle Avenue. So none of these changes that are proposed would directly affect us, but I, I wanted to speak in support of the proposed traffic calming measures, but also make a comment specifically about the options for bike lanes, which I think don't go far enough. Middle Avenue is currently designated officially as a safe route to school, but that's quite an oxymoron, given that there is currently no bike lane or any protection from high-speed road traffic for the hundreds of children who ride on this route to Hillview and Oak Knoll every day. UC Berkeley maintains a state traffic safety database called the Transportation Injury Mapping System. Since 2010, the database shows over a dozen car crashes on Middle Avenue that involve bicycles, six of which unfortunately caused injuries to children. The current three options only consider painted bike lanes for most of Middle, with a possible short, protected bike lane on the stretch between El Camino and University. I urge the council to consider an additional option four, to build a protected bike lane, not just for that short stretch, but for the full, full length of the street from El Camino to Olive, which is the route that children take to both schools each day. Painting bike lanes on the street reduces stress for bikers, but there's little or no evidence that such lanes actually improve road safety. In fact, research from Georgia Tech shows that protected bike lanes with physical barriers that separate cars and bikes are the only type of lanes that actually offer a statistically significant improvement in safety for cyclists. The staff report expresses a concern that removing parking on both sides of the street will cause packaged delivery vehicles to illegally use the bike lane for deliveries. That might cause young bikers to dangerously navigate around a truck into high-speed car traffic. But that illegal parking behavior is likely, whether parking is removed on both sides or on one side of the street, which are options one and two. The only way to really prevent such unsafe behavior is to build a protected bike lane for the full length of Middle. Last, I want to speak to the issue of cost. The report expresses a concern about the cost implications of a protected bike lane in option three, even though Stanford has agreed to pay for the stretch, but it does not consider low-cost vertical separations besides bollards or concrete islands. Other cities have used materials such as planters that are low-cost, sustainable, and improve the aesthetics of the street. So adding a protected bike lane need not materially increase the cost of the project. In fact, it is a simple enhancement to the plan for painted bike lanes that would actually improve, actually accomplish the goals of safety for all road users. Thank you for listening today.
Thank you for your comment. This will be the final call for public comment on our informational items, J1 through J3. Our next speaker is Brendan Visser.
Hi. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I'm a surgeon at Stanford. I've lived on Middle Avenue for a dozen years at the crusty San Mateo. I have two young daughters, one who attends Oak Knoll and one who attends Hillview. Well, it would be tremendous personal inconvenience to our family living on Middle Avenue, having lived here for more than a decade. I really don't see options other than having a bike lane in both directions as really making this street safe. Traffic over the last decade has really worsened on the street. I think everybody anticipates. I think everybody anticipates that traffic will worsen further with the opening of the, the new building at El Camino. Well, other options have, have been discussed. And, and obviously there are concerns from neighbors. I think that the safety of the children who are using this as a, as a bike safety route has really got to be put first and foremost on, on this. The traffic calming measures have been much discussed, but little action has been taken. And, and understanding that there are limitations on state law, for example, and speed limitations. We really need to start to make some headway to make this street safer. Particularly at San Mateo, where the bikes come out from San Mateo, having crossed the bike bridge and come around the corner here on this southeast side, the Stanford side. It's extremely unsafe when cars park on that corner. And that's got to be addressed quite immediately, almost perhaps before even bike lanes can be constructed. We really urge the city council, understanding you've had a long night, to really take the safety of children into account as you work on these plans. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Seeing no further hands. Mayor Nash, you may continue. Thank you. Are there any city council questions on any of the information items? Councilmember Combs.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Nash. I had a question on J3, Updates About City Hosted Community Events and Observances. It, it seems like the next item outside of, or after the Bell Haven Resource Fair is a Halloween celebration. And I just wondered if I could get a little bit more information. I don't think this city has historically done a Halloween celebration even before the pandemic. I know that there was a, the downtown merchants who had the thing where the kids would go out and, and get candy. And, and so, and so I just wanted some, some additional clarity about what this is.
There used to be a Halloween parade. So there's a Halloween parade that started in downtown, go all the way across and then come over to here. I've been in it multiple times with my kids.
A Halloween and not the Fourth of July parade?
There was both. So you would gather downtown in a parking lot and then everyone would be dressed up. And they would, they would come from there all the way across, over, over to this area. And then there'd be bouncy houses and things in Burgess Park. And then you would come back and then the merchants would be giving out candy. So it was like a giant fun Halloween festival. But yeah, I remember, I, I remember it vividly in 2012 because my kids were really young enough to enjoy it.
Yeah, so that, that sounds great. And so, again, my question to staff is, is that what we're talking about when we say Halloween celebration? Or is it, is it something else? And what is it? And maybe it is that we haven't formalized that yet. And if that's fine, and you want to follow up offline, then that's, then we can do that.
Yeah, I, I don't have that level of specificity and I need to double check our routines for agenda review, whether, how we're kind of happy to report back to you, though.
Okay, yeah, totally fair. It is, it is not, not obviously a pressing question. Thanks.
Good question, though. Vice Mayor Wilson.
Thanks, just following up on that. I had, when I had my one-on-one with the city manager this week, I did request that when it comes back, there more, be more information about the scale of the magnitude of each of these events and the approximate cost of each of the events. So we can have that when having our discussion. So however, the city staff is able to provide a little more context. That might help address the Halloween thing as well as all the things. Thanks.
The next item is City Manager's Report with City Manager Justin Murphy.
Thank you. So I'd like to just be able to quickly put in a plug for a few things that happened recently, but they're also going to happen again in the future. So one is, or both, both of these events occurred on Friday. First is the Menlo Park Community Campus Tour. It was the first of four tours that be held over the upcoming months. So Meta, the generous donator and Level 10, the construction firm, provided a walking tour of the project, which included going to the roof decks, the interiors, being able to look at the exterior. So there are three more tours upcoming in October, January and March. So a great opportunity for people to get excited about what's, what's in store in the future. The second thing that happened on Friday was the music event at Bell Haven School and over 100 people in attendance, listening to Bust a Groove. And there will be another upcoming event on Friday, August 29th, with Frank Tebow, Tebado. So great opportunities there. And then the last update for this evening has to do with the Nealon Park zip line. The zip line at the All Abilities Playground is set to return to service on a trial basis, weekdays starting Monday, August 29th. The zip line has been closed pending modifications to the equipment to help mitigate the noise generated by unauthorized users of the zip line during nighttime, which is disturbing the nearby residents. So starting with the trial period of three to four weeks, the zip line will be open on weekdays during the day, then manually locked and immobilized overnight and weekends to prevent unauthorized use. If the initial trial period goes well, then access may be potentially expanded to weekends. So staff will review the trial and report back to the Parks and Rec Commission at the, on September 28th. So those are just a, a few updates for today.
Thank you. Are there any council member reports since the August 9th, the city council meeting? I guess I will just say the Meta building tour of the MPCC campus was spectacular. The building is really taking shape and it was amazing to actually get it onto the second floor and even the roof and just get a view of what is coming. And it's, it's very special. All right. With that, we will be adjourned. Thank you all.